Go.
Let's go. Ready when you are.
Oh, thank you. Welcome to the San Mateo County Planning Commission meeting of March 10, 2021. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chair Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz is absent and staff is represented by Manowits, Fox, and Montes.
Thank you. First, we will have oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's regular agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Your staff will explain how the public comment process works for our remote meeting.
Thank you, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the VIA SUEM conference this morning, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize and indicate your desire to speak for any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to speak, please use the raised hand feature by dialing star nine. For those joining by phone, please press the star nine button to indicate your desire to speak. Please note, the members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your item called, go ahead and press star nine to your desire to speak. And right now, I do see one hand raised for this item for oral communication. So I do see Ron Snow. Ron, please unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners and Steve. Thank you for letting me speak. This is an item that's not on the agenda. And it's just a general observation that I wanted to call your attention to. I did send an email not too long ago, so you probably didn't get it. And there's a problem just generally with developers. I think their actions are, in essence, against what we're trying to accomplish with the tree ordinance and preserving our green environment in the county. Just in West Menlo Park on Alameda, just south of the Dutch Goose, if you know where that is. Anyway, there's a lot that had been neglected many years. And I think county somehow a developer took it over. But they entirely scraped every living tree and bush off that property. And this is something that happens quite frequently. I had talked to another real estate person and say, that's the common practice is often a developer will come in and scrape the land, sometimes just to sell it to then a builder. The idea is it's difficult to get the trees off the land. And once you do that, you can build anything you want. Anyway, so there's a picture that I sent you all of that lot that has created an eyesore on Alameda and blighted that whole section because there's just no trees, no greenery, no nothing. Another location is on Leland Avenue in the University Park neighborhood of West Menlo. This is also a county location where the developer falsely claimed on his tree permit that he wanted to remove an ash tree that was 12 inches in diameter and had water damage. Well, the neighbors responded to that with the aspect that the photographs were taken while it was raining and thus the water accumulation and that the tree was over 36 inches in diameter. And yet, nothing was done. I think I had mentioned this a couple of months ago. And there's got to be something that can guide these developers to protect our greenery. Currently, that developer is causing all sorts of root damage and potentially tree damage as well. They have big blocks of the foundation just laying up against the tree and across the roots. These blocks must weigh hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pounds. And they're just smashed into the ground all around the tree. So anyway, planning needs to take a better approach, an effective approach that can preserve our community, these trees and greenery. And I hope to work with county on that. There are several, I think, on the line today. And I know in my neighborhood that want to work with county to to improve the tree ordinances and strengthen them so that we can preserve the greenery in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. I don't see any more hands raised at the moment. Let's give it a couple more seconds. No, that was all.
Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda, which has one item, the minutes of February 24, 2021, as revised, may have a motion to approve.
I move to approve the revised minutes.
Second.
You have a motion and second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you, approved.
Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on to the regular agenda. Our order of procedure for each item, we start with a presentation by the county planner, followed by questions from Commissioners. Then the applicant or the appellant may make a presentation, followed by the Commissioner, by Commissioner questions and comments. Then we will open public comment. Each member of the public who wishes to speak will have five minutes. Then we will close public comment. At last, we will have Commissioner deliberation and decision. Ms. Luhon, will you introduce the first item?
Sure. Item number one, Mid Peninsula Open Space Trust. Applicant Omar Smith from Mid Pen, PLN 201900385. Location 20080 Cabillo Highway. And the planner this morning is Olivia Boo.
Olivia, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. Good morning, Commissioners. Olivia Boo, project planner, I'd like to introduce the project. The project scope, the lay of the land, and the project compliance, and then show some property photos. So the project, the proposed project is to drill a domestic well to serve an existing single-family residence. It will replace an existing natural spring box that has now failed. The property now has to truck in water. The up to two domestic wells are proposed. If the first well does not yield water. The first location is approximately 290 feet from the right side property line and 300 feet from the rear property line. The second well location is about 150 feet from the right side and 600 feet from the rear property line. Both locations are accessible from an existing farm road on the property. No grading or significant vegetation removal is proposed, and the parcel is not within a scenic corridor. This is a general view of the property. Tinias Creek is at the north end of the property. Cabrillo Highway is to the west. And the well location is at the southeast corner. Here's another closer view. This shows the existing ranch road. And then, as referenced in the staff report, there is a stock pond, the nearest stock ponds, Stock Pond A, and then Stock Pond B. Stock Pond B is about 100 feet from the well location. And Stock Pond A is about 300 feet. It is closer to where the agricultural buildings and the single-family residents are located. And it is also where the north end of the water line will be located. So about 300 feet from the north end of the water line. And I'll go show that in more detail on a site plan. So this is the site plan. We have the existing ranch road, which runs in this portion east-west. The existing structures centered. And then the ranch road continues if you turn right at the existing structures, head south. And then at the southern point, heads east-west again. And this is the proposed domestic well location. And you can see more closely the Stock Pond B and the Stock Pond A. A water tank also is proposed. And then the water line, as I mentioned, will run parallel with the existing ranch road and ending at its northern point at the existing structures. Photos, this is if the shows you the access from Cabrillo Highway to the grounds of Total Ranch, which is the property. This is the photo on the right is as you continue on the ranch road. This is about midpoint between the entry of the ranch road and then the existing ag buildings. This is a photo of the single-family residence and the location of the existing structures on site. And then again, turning right, this is a view looking south and heading towards the domestic well locations. This is the, and then if you were to head east, continue east on the ranch road, this is where the well location is proposed. For project compliance, it complies with the applicable general plan and local coastal program policies. For general plan, the vegetative water, fish and wildlife resource policies, soil resources, visual quality, and rural land use. For the local coastal program, the project complies with land use, agriculture, and sensitive habitats. The resource management plan that was submitted and is included as an attachment to the staff report did note that no plant special status plant species are found on site. There are occurrences of special status wildlife species, that being the coho salmon, which is can be found near Tinias Creek, which is the northern point of the parcel. The California red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake have the potential to be found near the stock ponds. However, the applicant did confirm that because of the stock ponds are dry at the current time because of the lack of rainfall, that there is the potential to stock ponds, but there is none found at this time. There are no prime soils on the property. The parcel does contain land suitable for agriculture. No damage to soil is expected as the footprint of a domestic well is very minimal. The project complies with the planned agricultural district regulations in regards to setbacks and also in terms of permit requirements for general criteria, water supply criteria, and the conversion of lands suitable for agriculture. In terms of environmental review, the project qualifies as exempt per section 15303, class three, for construction of small structures. It was reviewed and recommended approval by the Ag Advisory Committee in August, at the August 10th meeting. Staff is recommending, asking, requesting that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit and planned agricultural district permit as noted as subject to the findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A. That's the conclusion of my presentation. I can be available for questions.
Chair Ketchum, you're muted.
It was me that was muted, so sorry. Commissioner, does you have question, Claire?
I'm sorry, was that for me? You cut out a little bit. Yeah, no, I don't have any questions at the moment.
Commissioner Gupta. Just some informational question. So this is a big parcel. Some over 400 acres of the parcel. I was just curious. Are the wells typically built so far away from the residents since it's being built to provide water for the residents?
I think generally, I don't know the detailed knowledge of domesticals overall. I do know that generally, you know, planning does request and try our best to ask the applicants to cluster it with, with, at least cluster at minimum with existing development and even more so with existing agricultural development structures and such. However, it was noted from the applicant that based on the parties that were guiding them on what their best option was that they had to for, to go at a location further off from where the agriculture buildings and well specifically for the single-family residents that they're having to propose this domestic well for.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Yeah, because I thought it would be easier if it is closer, but yes.
This location is the better chance of them to find domestic wealth for the property for the single-family residents.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And the other question I have is, what is the purpose of this? Like, I noticed that at both locations where they are, which are possibilities for building the well, there's a stock pond close to it. Is there some kind of requirement that there should be a stock pond next to it? Or what's the purpose?
I think it's, my understanding is that, and the applicant can confirm or clarify, that it's the, I believe it's the lay of the land and that it's existing stock ponds on the property. And it's, it happens to just be how everything is fitting together with the lay of the land and then where they're likely to find water.
Okay. And the stock pond, like it takes the overflow? Is that, is that how?
My understanding is that it's the water from, the water that ends up in the stock ponds is from the rainfall. Yeah, because the applicant said that because of the lack of water, the season, that those are very, very dry right now.
Hmm, okay. And and this tank, water tank that they are proposing? Do we have any idea of the size? How big?
I actually, I don't recall from the plans that I saw the size of it. I don't know if the, I actually don't know if the applicant is online that he might be able to answer that.
Okay, so is that the next step in the process that they apply for some permits with more information about what they are going to build? Is that how it works?
They will, upon approval of the domestic well drilling, they will then contact Environmental Health to work out for the drilling details. And they need to go through certifications and testing for the well to make sure it meets domestic well criteria.
Okay.
Olivia, I just moved Omar Smith over, so if you still have questions for him.
Oh, thank you. Hi, Omar.
Hi, everyone. A couple of questions to answer some of the questions that you have initially. The size of the well, or sorry, the size of the water tank, we're looking at a low-profile 4,900 gallon tank, which is typically what we use for storage for a residential house. So just a smaller tank. The pond location has just always been in that area. And we were, when we looked at the geology of the area, the north-south ridge lines have a better chance of getting better water quality. The east-west running ones have a chance to get brackish water out of the ocean. And so they have tried several wells along the San Mateo coast there. And if you get down into the lowlands closer to the house, closer to the highway, the chances of getting brackish water is better. So they recommended that we look at that far southeast corner for the well location.
Okay, okay, understood. Thank you. And the one more question that I have is, how is this land being used right now?
They have ongoing rotating grazing. That's the primary agricultural use. I know they also have other animals that they are raising on the branch as well. But it's the primarily grazing.
Primarily grazing, okay. Thank you, thank you, Olivia. Thank you, Mr. Omar.
Commissioner Hanson, do you have any questions?
I do have one question. The staff report mentioned that the current site will be abandoned. Is it also going to be rehabilitated? And so what plans are for rehabilitation, if any?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, do you mean the abandoned for the spring?
Yes, the site where they currently get fresh water.
Okay. I don't, I'm gonna believe that they would have to to shut it down, but I did not ask the applicant what would happen with that.
So they could leave everything in place?
There is a small cylinder spring box at the springhead area, but it's probably producing maybe less than a half a gallon a minute. So it's just a small dribble at this point. My thought is that we're removing the tank infrastructure from that area and that hopefully if we hit water at the top of the property, the tank at the top will serve and replace those tanks down at the bottom, if we hit water.
Yes, if you get water. So you're saying you'll remove that tank and all the infrastructure that supports it to the spring?
Yeah, we'll probably, we'll remove the tanks behind the house as part of the infrastructure, because the spring is not producing any water really at this point.
Plus all the infrastructure to the spring?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's a little question I have.
No problem.
Mr. Smith, did you have anything to add to the staff presentation or anything else while you're here?
The house is a historic ranching property for the San Mateo coast. I believe it's been in place for like 60 to 80 years, and the spring has been the primary source. And the whole point of this well is to allow the tenants to continue to be on the property.
Okay, let's open public comment. And I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Luhon.
Sorry, I was muted. So we're now opening public comment for item number one. If you want, if your hand is raised, I will go ahead and prompt your microphone so you can begin speaking. And right now, I don't see any hands up. But we want to give it a couple more seconds and see if we have any. See, none.
Okay, may I have a motion to close public comment?
I moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Public comment on this item is now closed. Staff, have anything else to add at this point?
No, that is, that is it.
Let's move on to Commissioner comments and discussion. Commissioner Ramirez, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, just a follow-up question for the applicant. So how long have they noticed the diminution of the spring, you know, that has come down now to a trickle?
This process started to become more seasonal about two years ago. And so last year was the decision that we really needed to move forward to improve the water system because of the amount of water we had to truck in for the family. So we started the application in November of 2019 to get to the point where we are here.
Okay, additional question to that. Did this ever happen? Are you aware that this might have happened in the past when we had other drought seasons?
No, the tenant has been on that property for at least 10 years. And they have, they've always pretty much had a reasonable amount of water kind of coming from that particular springhead area.
So even in the past, when we had that long gap of drought, like almost 10 years, I'm just wondering if you were able to still survive those big droughts back then? And what has changed now that, you know, that has completely changed the environment to the point where you're not getting enough water there? Just trying to understand, you know, what's going on around there in the environment?
I don't really know why the spring is showing any significant changes or drying for that kind of point in the aquifer. You know, it seems like it's traditionally kind of been a pretty good producing spring over the years. But I don't, I don't see any immediate changes in vegetation, in tree coverage in that property of why that has started to dry out more over the last couple of years than in the past. There are, I mean, the only option that I could potentially see is in the area to the east of the house is a pretty large eucalyptus grove that has kind of grown over the years on that, on that kind of, in that same little valley area where the spring has been producing from. And there's a chance that the size of those trees, because most of them seem like they're more in the, you know, 12 to 24 inch diameter trunk size. The larger, there are four really large eucalyptus up on the front part of the property that are in the, you know, maybe eight to 10 foot diameter trunk space. But this back valley has smaller eucalyptus. you know, maybe eight to ten foot diameter trunk base, but this back valley has smaller eucalyptus. Uh, and it's a, and it's seems like it's a pretty good growth. So I'm thinking maybe over the last twenty years, that the development of that grove might have been what's pulled some of the water source from the spring area.
And with
Uh, that, yeah.
New chair, um, if I could just quickly expand on that, because I, you know, this is a really um tough and important question. Um, and um, I I think in response um to Omar's comments, there may be certainly localized conditions that have impacted this. But I think it's um appropriate to note that we have a number of proposed new wells to replace natural springs that have relied on a um that have been relied on as a water source. In fact, um, at the next um planning commission meeting, I think we'll, you'll be seeing two additional applications like this one. So um notwithstanding the potential for localized impacts, I think there is um potentially a greater um change in um our environment that is impacting these water sources. And um I think it's worthy of um further analysis and consideration.
If I may, if I still, I'm still uh in the comment period. Uh, yeah, Steve, thank you very much. Um, I think uh, like you say, maybe this is localized. And I've heard in the past where, you know, there's uh eucalyptus grow um that they do tend to soak up quite a bit of water and um and be detrimental to the area. Uh, but overall, I mean, we should be very concerned about what's going on and, you know, figure out um, you know, what what is happening and what should, you know, what should be the policy going forward as far as, you know, i- is everyone gonna get a a whale? And then are we gonna dry out the aquifer? Right? So I don't know. I think there are some serious questions to be looked at uh here for the future. That's it.
Uh, Commissioner Gupta?
Actually, that um triggers a question in my mind. Uh, how is, uh, this is for uh Mr. Omar Smith? Uh, how is um the rest of the property uh provided water, especially when there's grazing? So there must be grass.
Yeah.
Assume.
Um, there is two, there are um two agricultural wells on the like middle-south ridge area. One is driven by a solar pump and one is driven um by a a windmill. Uh, so the, what we do is with our natural resource department, uh, we look at the residual drying matter of how much grass and feed is available for livestock on the property. Uh, and then the the rancher and grazer will adjust the number of animals based on the amount of feed available on the property. Uh, it's, it's currently uh the lease that we have on that property is with the Markey Guard family. And they they ranch about eight thousand acres in the Bay Area. So they move cattle from this property down to the Cloverdale Ranch and then also to our Lone Madrone, which was up in La Honda. Uh, so they they will rotate cows around. So as areas are uh not year-round, uh, they will move cows off the property. So late, like in late summer or midsummer to early fall, when the water sources are really limited on this property, uh, the number of cows dramatically drops on this property right now. And they shift uh to other properties around the Bay Area where they have better water sources and grazing for the cows.
Okay, so so far they they are, they have worked it out. They are not looking to um get more water during the summer months, so so provide some other means. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. At this point, we're, I mean, we're looking uh uh as just as the conservation grazing program to maintain the the property. So we're we've worked with the with our biologists and our natural resource department to say, what do we feel that the land can handle and manage for the number of animals? And we do a an annual labor and farm report with the grazer for our potential and determine how many animals we fill should be allowed by AUM rate for this next year based on weather conditions and and grasses available for grazing.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna follow up on Commissioner Ramirez's uh question about springs. Now, I'm speaking as a geographer, as a generalist, and not as knowing anything about this area. Most of the springs in the Bay Area fall along fault lines and they come and go as land moves in the Bay Area. And that's a natural thing. But that that may not happen here, but it's just a natural thing. Uh, eucalyptus are, they will, they'll suck the soil dry in the area. So junipers, junipers greatly alter springs. Um, probably one of the biggest factors on the coast side is the fog. We have been losing our fog banks. Uh, it's, you know, it's fifty percent what it used to be just ten years ago. Um, if you remove trees in the ridge line, where particularly the redwood trees of, you know, they basically clean created their own weather in the fog that saturated the ground, which would feed the the uh gra- the streams below hand. I mean, it could be all those, none of those, a combination of those. It's, it would take some some research to figure it out. Uh, other than that, um, uh, if there are no more questions, I think this I'm ready to throw eye on this proposal.
Sorry, can I interrupt for just a second? Um, I know that public comment is closed for this item, but I do see someone with their hand raised. So, um, Chair Ketchum, it's up to you.
Sure, pass them.
Okay. All right, please accept this request. And this is for Fran Pollard. Please accept this request. I mean, your microphone and begin speaking. Hold on just one second. Can you hear us? Ms. Pollard? She's muted.
Fran, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I I did not mean to have my hand up. I can't get rid of that thing that says hand, hand.
Okay.
So I I I have no comment, sorry.
Well, thank you.
Okay, so um, I just want to say uh just a moment on your motion. The, I appreciate very much that you included the Rangeland Management Plan for Toto Ranch. Uh, found it very interesting, the background, history, existing conditions, and management recommendations for this property, and also the terminology here, the environmental value of the shady loafing areas for the livestock that I very much appreciate that term. Anyway, um um, Commissioner Hanson, would you like to make the motion?
You're muted.
Olivia, can you put up the recommendation so I can read it? Okay, let's change this. I so moved that the planning commission approved the coastal development permit and the planned agricultural district permit. County file number PLN twenty nineteen zero zero three eight five, subject to the required findings and conditions of approval and attachment aid.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye. The motion is approved unanimously. Um, good luck. I hope you find the water you need. Uh, moving on to the next item. Um, Ms. Luhan, will you introduce the item?
Yes, we have item number two, owner Highland Solutions LLC, applicant Janelle Fong and Toby Long Design, file number PLN two zero two zero dash zero zero four four three. Location is ten Cardinal Court in West Mellow Park. And the project planner is Mike Schaller.
Uh, good morning commissioners. Um, I hope everybody can see my screen. Um, Janice, can you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, yes, so the, good morning commissioners. The project before you today is the consideration of an appeal of a staff level tree removal permit and an after-the-fact significant tree removal permit for the unpermitted removal of a significant-sized coastal live oak tree. And why is my screen not working? Okay, uh, let me first familiarize you where with where the project is located. Uh, the project site is located at ten Cardinal Court in the unincorporated West Mellow Park area. Where the little red dot is here, it's uh not too far past the split where Alameda to Pulgas uh veers off this way and Santa Cruz Avenue goes that way into um downtown Santa Cruz. And this is an air photo of the site to give you a little more familiarity with um the conditions. This, to be fair, this photo is not the most current up-to-date because the original building that was that was known as twenty fifty Santa Cruz Avenue uh has been demolished. This is the subject tree that um uh that is the subject of our discussion today. Santa Cruz Avenue uh located right there, and then Crocus Court is located right here. Um, in order to clearly understand the dynamics of this project, it's important to under, have an understanding of overall timeline as relates to this uh parcel. Um, in October twenty seventeen, the Board of Supervisors approved the three-lot subdivision of twenty fifty Santa Cruz Avenue, creating the subject parcel. Then in April of twenty twenty, a building permit was submitted for development on ten, what is now known as ten Cardinal Court. Uh, December of twenty twenty, an application to remove the subject tree was submitted. On January eleventh, staff approved the application for tree removal subject to a ten-working-day appeal period, which ended on January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. On January twenty-five of this year, an appeal was filed and arrangements were made with the appellate to pay the filing fee on January twenty-seventh, when staff was back in the office. On January twenty-sixth, the property owner emailed the county asking whether the appeal was valid or invalid because payment had not been submitted prior to the appeal period. On January twenty-seventh, uh, the county responded back that it was a valid appeal. Later on the twenty-seventh, after the close of business hours, staff received several emails from neighboring property owners stating that the subject tree had been cut down. So that's the timeline. Um, before we get to the appeal, I think it's uh, uh, staff, I wanted to explain why staff approved the initial tree removal permit. Um, as I mentioned, we approved the uh the initial tree removal application on January eleven of this year. In approving the removal, staff considered the location of the tree in the middle of the subject parcel well within the development envelope of for this parcel as defined by the property zoning regulations. That development envelope was largely dictated by the conditions of approval of the subdivision. And it's a little easier to understand on the site, on the site plan here. Um, so the conditions of approval of the subdivision required the shifting of the subdivision's driveway northward to preserve to preserve this heritage oak tree, which is located right here. Um, this shifting of the driveway compressed the development envelope of the parcel with the result that the subject tree was now within the footprint of the proposed house, which is located right. So that's the subject tree right there. This dash line right here represents the wall of the first floor. And then um the the second floor is located right there. So the canopy of the tree actually extends up and into actually would have occupied an area of about like that. Um, as discussed in your staff report, staff approved the tree removal permit in order for the property owner to make reasonable economic use of their property, consistent with the same rights of surrounding property owners. Uh, now, as I mentioned, an appeal was filed of staff's approval on January twenty-fifth of this year. The text of the appeals before you hear in the full letter was included as attachment D in in your report. The reasoning behind staff's initial approval, I've already discussed. But to address the point specifically in the appeal statement, it is correct that this tree was well within the interior, well within the interior of the site and not located adjacent to public roadways. Um, this location, in fact, the location of the tree itself actually minimized the value of this tree as a gateway tree for people driving down Santa Cruz Avenue into Mellow Park. As you can see, there are numerous large trees bordering this property um which are required to remain as conditions of approval of of the subdivision. Um, these trees effectively block the view of this tree from the roadway. Um, given the previous discussion regarding the tree and its location within the building envelope, staff would like to re- reiterate that its decision was based upon allowing reasonable economic use of the property, consistent with the rights enjoyed by other surrounding property owners. Now, where things get complicated, um unfortunately, as we mentioned previously, the subject tree was removed prior to this hearing on consideration of the appeal. As is discussed in your staff report, the significant tree removal regulations spell out the enforcement actions that can be used by the planning department in this instance. They include a temporary moratorium on development on the subject property, obtaining an after-the-fact tree removal permit for the subject tree, submittal and implementation of a mitigation plan and payment of fines and invest and investigation fees. Upon learning of the subject tree's removal, the community development director ordered a moratorium on all development work on the project site, except for those actions necessary to secure the overall property. The county subsequently released the hold on the building permits for uh for lots eight and twelve are Cardinal Court, which are the parcels on either side of of the subject parcel. Uh, these are separate legal lots from ten Cardinal Court, um, which is the subject violation. So we couldn't necessarily impose a moratorium, a continuous moratorium on those two lots. Um, the building permit for the house on ten Cardinal Court is on hold until a resolution of this after the factory removal permit. The applicant has already planted two twenty-four-inch box northern red oak trees in the rear yard area of ten Cardinal Court as mitigation for removal of the subject tree. This replanting was reviewed by the county arborist who concurs with the size and species of the replacement trees. The required investigation and penalty fees and the amount of four thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars have been submitted. Staff believes that the replanting plan already completed by the applicant constitutes appropriate mitigation for the unpermitted removal of tree number seventeen, which is the subject tree, based on the site constraints and the limited locations for replacement trees to thrive. So in closing, um, staff is recommending denial of the appeal on the basis that the criteria for tree removal established by the significant tree ordinance has been met and approval of the after-the-fact tree removal permit on the basis that the criteria for the granting of that permit has also been met by the applicant, subject to the required findings and conditions of approval identified in attachment A of your report. Are there any questions I can answer for the commission at this time?
Okay, uh, Commissioner Ramirez, would you like to start off? Do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, just the overall, maybe just a comment on trying to figure out uh the timing of the cutting. I mean, uh, it it sounds from what the neighbors are saying that this was cut basically at night or very late into the evening. Do you anything about that?
Uh, that is correct. That's uh based upon the um, the date stamp or the, I'm sorry, the timestamp of the emails that were, that we received from the neighbors. Um, it was, if I remember correctly, right around six o'clock in the evening. Um, I actually had gone home at five o'clock that night. Um, though obviously um there would have been no code enforcement officers or anybody here at that time. Um, but yes, so it was after, after the close of normal business hours um when the tree was removed. And at that When the tree was removed and at that time of the year, it was dark at that time of the evening.
Have you heard any reasons from the applicant, from the owner as to why it was done at that time?
They, and I
We can ask them here, I guess, yeah.
On their part, and they can provide their reasoning for that action. But they, yes, they did provide, they did, they made statements as to why they removed the tree.
Okay, all right, not additional questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Gupta, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm I'm just looking at my notes. And actually, I even looked at the correspondence and it seems like sorry, just give me a minute.
Well, we'll come back to you, Commissioner Hanson.
Which, thank you, thank you. That would be fine.
Okay, Hanson.
Yes, I got some questions. Got a lot of questions. The, let's follow up on Commissioner Ramirez's question. What did the applicant reason? What did they tell you?
Well, as they relate to us in their emails that they already had scheduled this removal, they had a, if I remember correctly, paid a a deposit or a fee to the true removal company that they couldn't get a refund for. They believed in their mind that they that the that the appeal was invalid because the fee had not been paid by the close of business on the twenty sixth, which was the end of the appeal period. Even though staff had notified them that our position was that it was a valid appeal.
Listen, okay. Did you impose the maximum amount penalty?
Yes, yes, the the penalty fees that were assessed, penalty and investigation fees or are dictated by the ordinance. So there was no there's no, there was no leeway to impose greater fines than what the ordinance already imposes in this instance.
So I understand the fine is one tenth of one percent of the developed one of the property. So it's a material to to the project. Could there be other penalties? Like, could you say, because you to me, it almost smacks of arrogance saying, oh, since you've done something like this, you know, could you have also said no more development on this property for the next five years?
I think I should defer to Tim Fox or Steve Mon or I'm sorry to Tim Fox or Director Monolot's on this issue. It's unclear to me what are parameters beyond what's actually stated in the ordinance. I'm not, it's unclear to me what extra powers we may have in this instance.
Okay, another question. When the subdivision came up, it came in front of the planning commission and we spent a lot of time talking about it, just like where should the driveway be? And how do you get access to the property? And we talked very much about preserving the trees. Was that a consideration? That our concerns way back when were considered?
As part of the subdivision, you mean? I, so I'll have to, I was not the project planner or had no involvement with the subdivision phase of this. I believe Steve could probably provide more detail about that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thanks, Mike. And I'll let Tim chime in too, because he was there. And I think many of the commissioners might have been part of that review as well. As you recall, I think at the time, the major concern was the tree removal associated with subdivision improvements. The subdivider had to plan for access to the site. The least damaging option would have been to share the existing driveway that goes to the neighbor's cul-de-sac, but they did not agree to share it. So the developer proposed their own accessway and we talked for many hours on options to establish that driveway in a manner that would save the trees that border the driveway and the cul-de-sac next door. And in fact, in order to achieve that objective, we amended the subdivision regulations that enabled us to grant exemptions to lot depth requirement in order to protect these trees. And it's very important for the commissioners to know that the tree in question is not any of the trees along that driveway that were of concern at the time of the subdivision. There were trees that were acknowledged were going to be removed, excuse me, as part of the subdivision. And the tree at issue was not one of them. However, I I think there was acknowledgement given the expectation that the property owner would be able to build out some of these lots that there may be some trees that would be removed. That, of course, was going to be determined by the design of the buildings that were pursued by the future owners. And in this case, that's what happened was that the trees that were required to be protected as part of the subdivision have been protected. What's at issue now is the trees that need to be removed to accommodate the development, which was not decided at the time of the subdivision. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does Mr. Fox want to come in and what what other penalties, if any, could be assessed other than monetary?
I believe that the actions of the department taken with regard to this particular file are at the maximum of what has been provided by the Board of Supervisors by its ordinances. If the question is, could the county revisit its ordinance code in order to adjust the consequences for removal of a tree without a permit, we've done so in the past. There's an outer limit to what would likely be sustainable. But that would be something we would analyze from a legislative perspective. It's not something that could be an upward departure from the provisions of our ordinance in an individual case. So I I believe this, I believe staff has imposed the maximum consequence for tree removal without a permit in this instance.
Thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Gupta.
Okay, so a follow up to what Commissioner Hanson was concerned about. Right now, there's a moratorium on building on on this particular lot. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct until the resolution of this after the fact permit.
Right, and if if this if this appeal is denied, I'm going to take both scenarios. If this appeal is denied, how long does that moratorium still continue? Or do we have control over that?
Well, so as with any discretionary permit, your decision could be appealed onto the Board of Supervisors. So presumably, if if the commission was to deny the requested after the fact permit, that decision could be appealed by the property owner to the Board of Supervisors. And the moratorium would stay in effect until that was, until the board had heard that that appeal. Conversely, if if you approve it, it the reverse happens as well. I mean, your approval can also be appealed to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. But if it is not, do we still continue the moratorium for certain amount of time? Or is that?
Well, the wait, I'll let Steve, I'll let Steve answer that.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, I think Mike is right in that the moratorium stays in place until this appeal is resolved. Once the appeal is resolved, then the moratorium would be lifted.
It's lifted after that. It's, yeah. So there there was no penalty, no penalty to them in the sense that because they did something without, essentially without a permit while the bill was still being discussed.
No, let me be clear on that point. You know, in addition to the monetary penalties, we did stop work and they had been hoping to pull building permits and start construction on this lot much sooner, but by virtue of what's occurred, their project start time has been delayed and will continue to be delayed until the appeal is resolved.
Okay, and so so at this point, they cannot file a building permit?
No, they they have applied for the building permits, but we will not issue the building permit required to start construction until the appeal is resolved.
Okay.
The Commissioner Gupta, if I may, the the text of the of the ordinance that we're applying here provides that the purpose of the moratorium is to give the county an opportunity to study and determine appropriate mitigation measures. So it's not in the nature of a punishment. It's in the nature of ensuring that we don't rush to allow additional development that may have further impacts on trees. Because the sections that we're applying apply both to circumstances when there's a pending application and when there's no proposed development on the property. So the whole point of the moratorium is to take a pause to make sure that there's no further damage done to the trees on the property and that the mitigation measures that staff want to impose by way of legalization permit are adequate.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Okay, so going back to to my so the 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 picture that I see here of of the property at this time, all three lots, you said it, it's not the most current one. I can understand that that tree is removed.
Right, and the the house that you see, perhaps if I could share my screen again, go back to that one for everyone.
I'm talking of the attachment B.
So this this one right here?
Right.
Yeah, so this is the the most current air photo that we have available either through our own county GIS or Google. The house you see here is no longer there. That has been demolished. Some of the smaller trees that have also been removed, the ones that were permitted to be removed as part of the subdivision approval or others that were below that were smaller than twelve inches in diameter and therefore were not regulated by our tree ordinance. But the majority of the trees along the perimeter are still there and are intended to remain to remain there. Those are, there were conditions of approval associated with the the subdivision that require the retention of these trees to provide screening between adjacent property owners.
Okay. Yeah, I I like that part. I think that that's great. There's a kind of, kind of a screen from the Santa Cruz Avenue also. And as well as from the neighbors across on, I believe this is Cardinal, right?
This is Crocus Court right here. Cardinal Court will be a driveway that comes in right out there and then kind of skirts around the northern edge of the of this heritage joke to a point here where it then becomes a an individual driveway for the house at eight. Yeah, eight Crocus Court, or I'm sorry, eight Cardinal Court is this lot right here.
And on that point, the heritage tree that Mike just referenced, excuse me, was one of the trees that were important to preserve as part of the subdivision. And one of the reasons why the board agreed we should amend our subdivision regulations to allow exceptions to depth standards so we could preserve that tree. And when you consider that in relation to the tree that's the subject of the appeal, it demonstrates how the buildable area is limited by existing constraints, including the need to protect that heritage tree.
Okay, um. Normally, at this point, I would ask the appellant if they wanted to make a presentation. As I understand it, this Schmidt was unable to attend. Is there someone, and also understand this is sort of a neighbor, neighbor group effort. Is there some representative of the appellant's group who would like to speak for the appellant's? I see Gregory Ferris hand raised and I think he was the author of a bunch of emails. Could we have him speak at this point for the appellant's?
Of course. How many minutes do you want on the timer?
Well, let's ask him what he needs and figure that out.
Mr. Ferris?
Maybe ten minutes.
Ten minutes would be fine. Thank you.
I I was, I was not prepared to present, but can I present materials?
If you have your screen ready to share, but we do have your, the pictures and everything you sent. They are posted on the agenda page and we've seen them. So if you wanted to just refer to them, that would also work.
Okay, I can share them as well. And and they weren't all, they weren't all included.
Okay, you can try sharing your screen, but I can't do the timer at the same time. So I'll just keep mine to the side and I'll just time you that way. But if you want to show your screen now, let's see if it comes up.
I don't see.
There should be, hold on just a second. Give me a second. Okay, do you see it now?
Do we still have audio contact with Mr. Ferris? I don't see him in the list.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Something happened when I did share screen.
Maybe, maybe if we could if you would just speak, we could.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'll try again with this video. Can you hear the audio on that?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, what you see is there's a crew of maybe three or four people. My son took this video. He wasn't sure how many people. You can see it's dark. This video, the timestamp is five fifty eight PM. I, one of the things I sent was sunset and last light on this day. The tree came down a half hour after sunset. It came down after last light, so it's it's completely dark. And you can see the either headlamps or flashlights of the crew as they take down that tree. It's also raining. So this occurred during January's atmospheric river event. It's the same atmospheric river river event that led to the washout of Highway one down near Big Sur. Another attachment which I won't show shows, well, maybe I, maybe I can just bring that up. This is a, and I have a full video of the of the weather radar. But this, this little mark shows Menlo Park. And this shows 5:57, I just took a screenshot, 5:57 PM, this is that. The weather radar of the rain rolling through, so it's during, it's at night during a rainstorm. I, I'm, I'd also like to show, uh. Some pictures of, uh, the, this is the tree, actually, so this, this is the tree. When it was intact, I don't have a date on this, this is part, this is the second story of my house. You can see, you know, there's perspective here, but this tree is 50 feet tall. And it, it towers over this, over the house, it's a very large tree. Um, this is a telephoto taken, um, of the cut and this shows the tree down. And this, this shot, uh, let's see. This shows the tree down, this is my house. If, and I did not, I was not prepared, I guess, to present, but if you take this, this tree. And you put it this way, it strikes my house, it hits my house. And it hits my property and it could hit my son. Who, uh, who went out to see what was going on in the dark and, um. Uh, I'm gonna get a, a little personal here, but for those of you who are parents will know. Uh, what I'm feeling when I say that it could have killed my son. Um, I remember reading a newspaper article about 10 years ago. About a man who, I think this was in the Sierra Foothills, I don't know exactly where it was, he cut down a tree. And he thought he knew which way he was gonna drop the tree. And the tree, the tree. The tree fell the wrong way and it killed his wife and his baby, excuse me. That left a big impact on me. I never thought I'd have to worry about the safety of my family on my own property. The people who did this. They didn't care about me, they didn't care about my property, they didn't care about my family, they hurt, they cared about getting out of there. Before anybody came to stop them, they did it in the dark, in the rain. An atmospheric ri- river event, they didn't care about the, the, their crew. A, a crew should not be cutting down a tree in the dark with flashlights or headlamps. Okay, they shouldn't do that to their crew and they shouldn't do that to the neighbors. Um. The, the, they were gone within minutes, they started and were gone within minutes, another neighbor who lives, uh. Back behind on, on Harrison Way heard the chainsaw, they put on rain gear to go out and look and, and the crew was already gone. And just in terms of the behavior here. Monday and Tuesday after this. When there was already a moratorium in place, they were back doing work on this property and the neighbors have pictures. On Tuesday. They didn't park on Santa Cruz Avenue, I think they, uh. I'd, well, I don't know what they were trying to do, they parked back on Harrison Court and came in the back way. And as soon as the neighbor spotted them, they took off, they knew that they shouldn't be there, this is not how things should be operating. Um. Uh, uh, some of the neighbors are afraid to comment publicly. Because of how desperate this activity is. Um, and as I mentioned, uh, I think the likely values, the, the, the fine, th- that's, that, um. Has been levied here, I think the, the comparison to the value of these, this property is more like 0.03%. So this fine is not a deterrent, we, we, we know that, it's not a deterrent, because they just went ahead and did what they pleased. And they did what they pleased without concern for neighbors' health, lives or property. Um, so, um. I, I, one of the things that is kind of surprising me is that. There's a, potentially a longer moratorium on Lot Two because that's where this took place. It wasn't Lot Two that did this, it was the developers, okay? And they're developing this entire site. And putting a penalty on Lot Two because that's where the, the tree happened to be, doesn't make sense to me. Um, so, uh, this is a foolish and brazen act, it, it put it, uh, at danger. The crew that they hired. Uh, and it put a danger my property, my family, my son. Uh, is very egregious and, um. Uh, I think what happens here will set a precedent for what is permitted. And, uh, if it's okay to cut down trees at night. During a rainstorm, when a gust of wind could cause the tree to go the wrong way. And hit my house or hit my son. If that is not egregious and deserves some additional penalties. Then I can't imagine anything that is. I, 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 I think that's all I, I have to say, uh, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Uh, I'd like to. Well, do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Ferris, or should we just move on to public comment?
No questions on my part.
Okay, um, can we open public comment now, I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Luhan.
Uh, may I, may I suggest, Madam Chair, that we, um, let the applicant speak first?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was part of the procedure since this is an appeal.
It, it's really up to you. It, it's really up to you, um, Chair, but I, I just, uh, I think that they might want to respond to the issues raised by the appellant.
All right, would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Uh, yes, let me defer to, uh, our client's attorney, Alicia Guerra, I believe she has her hand up.
Go ahead, um, let me move her over.
Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Guerra?
Yes, thank you very much, uh, good morning, Chair Ketchum, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Alicia Guerra with Buckholzer. We represent Highland Solutions, if I may also have up to 10 minutes, I don't think I need 10 minutes, but since you indulge the appellant here with. Uh, 10 minutes, I'd like to be able to respond to the commissioner's questions as well as the comments made. By Mr. Ferris and perhaps clarify things for the record here. Um, first, we greatly appreciate the staff report and, um, clarification as to the status of the appeal and the work that. Was authorized pursuant to the tree removal permit. What I'd like to clarify, I, I think there's some, um. Misunderstanding as to timing of what transpired here, so I want to clarify that. And also clarify how every measure undertaken with respect to the tree removal was in accordance with the tree removal permit issued by. Staff pursuant to the prior approvals granted by the Board of Supervisors for the project in 2017. But first, I'm gonna speak to the timing issue. Um, a- and also regarding the timing of the appeal, so there was some confusion. Because of the letter that was submitted for the approval of the permit. That basically indicated that an appeal needed to be filed and fully paid. Prior to the lapse of the appeal period, that did not happen, we did not know until. Staff advised us later in the day on the 27th at 3:12 PM. That the appellant would have more time to pay that appeal. We also looked at the county code regarding. The timing of when an appeal needs to be filed and unfortunately, the code referenced cited in the appeal or in the letter of determination. Cited to an old provision of your code that had subsequently been changed. So it no longer was working or it was no longer calendar days but business days. So there was some confusion as to when the actual appeal would need to be filed, we. Assumed that what county advised us regarding the need to comply with the appeal period. And the filing of the appeal meant file the appeal and pay the appeal and since that didn't happen. Despite my client asking, planning numerous, on numerous occasions as to whether an appeal had been filed. We did not know until 3:12 PM on the 27th. That the appeal had been filed and this was after email communications from my client as of 12:48 in the morning and 8:00 in the morning. To planning, asking if an appeal had been filed because. Of the issue they had with the contract with the tree removal company. Which was in order to schedule within this very limited window of time, as Mr. Ferris indicated. There was this atmospheric system out there, they had a very limited amount of time to remove the tree. And based on that, they, and they fought, paid a non-refundable deposit, made the arrangements to have the crew out there. Unfortunately, it necessitated due to the limited window of time because of the rain occurring, that they could only remove the tree. Later in the day, my client did advise staff of that, they thought that. An appeal had not been filed when they made the arrangements with the tree removal company. So it wasn't some nefarious event where they were going out in the dark of night with flashlights. It was, that was the time the tree removal company needed to remove the tree, so it did not impose. A safety hazard on the neighbors. So I just want to clarify that, I have my client here, um, who can provide further explanation of it, I think they're available online as well. The other thing I want to say is. In no situation has my client in any stretch of the imagination. Tried to do work in a way that's gonna be harmful to the neighbors, they have an extensive outreach with the neighbors, they have. Advised them as to what's been going on, um. They have been working with county staff, in fact, they agreed to pay the fines and penalties when this issue. Arose just to resolve this, they also implemented all of the tree protection and preservation and tree restoration, tree replacement measures. When they initiated the tree removal in accordance with the tree removal permit. Had an approved mitigation plan, the county arborist confirmed that tree number 17 needed to be removed. For the benefit of protecting the more important tree number three. So this is not a situation of somebody just saying, forget what the rules say. We're gonna go out and do what we want to do, that is far from the case here, they followed the rules. They thought they were following the right rules, there appears to be some discrepancy as to what the right rules were. But they have complied at every stretch, every step of the way here. And in that regard, when the county, um, issued the stop work order on the infrastructure, the, the horizontal work. They also implemented measures to make sure that the site is safe and secure. Not just for the property, but more importantly for the neighbors, so that there wouldn't be situations where the neighbors would be exposed to any. Unwarranted condition, they've provided for erosion control, implemented best management practices. They've, um, secured the trees that were the replacement trees, all of which was in the spirit not only of complying with the approved. Tree removal plan, tree mitigation plan, but also to assure the safety of the nearby neighbors. So I just want to clarify this, um, because I do think there's some confusion, I certainly understand Mr. Ferris's concern for his family. But, um, my client hired a reputable. Tree company to handle this work in accordance with the county's requirements. And so with that, we are looking forward to moving forward here. This project has been approved because the county is in much need of, of housing in, in this area in San Mateo County. And we just want to move forward in a productive. Way to be able to demonstrate we're in compliance here. Um, and if you have any questions, uh, the other thing I will say is my client did pay all of the fees, the penalty. I understand people think maybe more money should be charged, but they complied with what the county code says and didn't in any way. Break that requirement or breach that requirement. So we understand a building per, the building permits for lots one and three will be issued hopefully later today, all the fees have been paid, all the plans have been reviewed. And all the work has been completed, both with respect to the horizontal work to make it sure the sites. Come, uh, say, safe in accordance with the stop work order. And to comply with every single rule that the county has imposed here. So if you have any questions, you are welcome to ask me, like I said, I think my client is also available by phone. And the, um, the applicant here who filed the tree removal permit can also provide. Any, uh, clarification as to the permit itself, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner questions for the applicant, uh, Commissioner Ramirez?
Uh, yes, um, Ms. Guerra, um, so you're, you're saying that. The, uh, the contract to remove that tree. Uh, had some kind of a clause that said that there would not be, uh, a deposit return. And therefore, um, the timing. Uh, that the company did, could do the, the job was very specific as to when they could do it. And therefore, that's the reason that they decided, uh, to do the takedown of the tree on the 26th?
That's correct, Commissioner Ramirez, um, that was a non-refundable deposit. Unfortunately, my client didn't control the timing of the tree removal, it, once they paid the deposit and retained the tree removal contractor. They initiated the removal when the weather was. Safe to remove the tree, again, they're not wanting to expose people to unnecessary hazards, I mean, that, they're trying to maintain the site in a safe and secure manner. They had to allow the tree company to conduct the work in accordance with their contract. They, and they were not gonna get their deposit back, um, and so that's why the work went forward. Um, I, and I don't know, I cannot attest to the video that was taken by Mr. Ferris's son, I don't know if that was. Taken from my client's property, in which case it would have been a trespass situation, if it was taken from his property, that may be a different matter, but. We, there was no, uh, no awareness, as far as my client is aware, that it, there were any people in the vicinity of where the tree was gonna be removed. Because it had all been arranged with the contractor removing the tree.
Well, um. Well, th- thank you for the explanation, um. But I can just tell you that I, I'm not really buying the, um, the idea that. You know, they actually did the following at the safest time that they could have been done. Um, it seems that, uh, they rush, uh, to get it done as soon as possible. But I don't know, if you, uh, be satisfied if you could actually, you know, provide us with that. Uh, contract that would say that, uh. There was no refund and, uh, the timing was, uh, you know, any particular time that they could do it. Um, I don't know, it seems a little shady to me at the moment. No further questions at the moment.
Commissioner Gupta, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um. Uh, my question is, when, when it was known. That there's a certain number of days appeal period. Why schedule it that last day, why not wait another day? Was that considered even while talking to the contractor who was going to cut the tree?
Um, my understanding, Commissioner Gupta, is this, that. Um, the letter of decision was provided to the contractor regarding. The requirements for removing the tree and moving forward with the work. Because of these storms that we knew were happening, I mean, they checked the weather events before they removed trees. There was this very limited window of time where they could remove the tree. With the understanding that the tree permit allowed them to go ahead and proceed with the work. So they were trying to meet it, because I'll, I'll tell you, this project has been on a very. Tight schedule with respect to the horizontal and the building permit work. Because the building permits have been, were in, were submitted 11 months ago, the loan, uh. Was at risk of potential default, so the, my client was trying to get all the work satisfied. In accordance with the timing under the permits. And the need to get the building permits so that they could move forward and complete the project in a timely. and complete the project in a timely manner. So they didn't, they had understood when the appeal period lapsed, they could do the work. And so in the spirit of trying to get their building permits, they were trying to finish the work they needed to do with respect to the tree removal for tree seventeen so that they could continue to process the building permits. Because for processing the building permit applications, we've also had to demonstrate that the erosion control work, the pre-work, the site work, removal of the tree in accordance with the tree removal permit, all of that work has happened in accordance with the requirements of the tree removal permit. The other thing too is, as I understand it, as I mentioned, they were notified late in the day on the twenty-seventh despite having asked multiple times before then, all in an effort to try to confirm with the tree contractor that there were no issues. And they just didn't get confirmation until after they already made the arrangements with the tree crew to do this.
Okay.
Commissioner, one comment, cheer if I may. So I'm assuming, I don't know. I'm assuming the deposit that was that we are talking about must be more than what the penalty you paid. Just a comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Hansen, do you have anything to add or ask?
Sure. What, how much was the non-refundable deposit?
I don't know, Commissioner Hansen, but I will get you that answer.
So economics is driving the decision, you're saying, as opposed to being aware of the storm that was pending?
No, Commissioner, I'm sorry if if you thought that's what I was saying. What I was saying was my client is trying to get their project underway, comply with all of the county's requirements. You know, as you know, when you're trying to sequence construction and move forward with projects, you have to recognize that there are certain times when you can do the work and not do the work. They were trying to do the work when it was the safest to do the work based on what the tree removal company told them. I wouldn't say that they were just kind of going forward and doing, letting economics drive this, but they were trying to make sure they could satisfy all of the requirements, move forward, get their permits, continue to have a viable project in order to meet the timeframes here. And that was, there was a limited window of time given the weather events that they were confronted with.
Do you have an estimate if they couldn't have cut the tree when they could have found somebody else who could have cut the tree?
I don't know the answer to your question, Commissioner Hansen. I do have information that the deposit was three thousand. So, you know, the deposit, the fine was more than the deposit they paid for the tree removal. They still had to pay for the full tree removal. And I don't know, I don't know how many contractors they interviewed in order to identify a contractor to remove this tree. But I would, in my experience, because I represent a lot of home builders and developers, they don't pick a contractor who doesn't know what they are doing. They pick a contractor who knows when it makes sense to do the work and schedule the work. And, you know, with this, the weather events this year, and I deal with a lot of endangered species issues and habitat resources issues, there are so many seasonal restrictions that have to be at play in order to try to schedule your work at your site work, your tree removal work, your veg work, all of those things that go into this. So it's not a matter of somebody just picking up the phone saying, can you please remove my tree for me at six in the evening? It's when can I get this work done to satisfy the requirements of the tree removal permit in a manner that's consistent with all the C-three requirements on the site, all of the other regulations and county code provisions that apply? So my client picked a contractor who understood what the rules were that the county imposes. So, I mean.
No further questions.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to open public comment at this time. Ms. Luhon, could you?
I just do want to point out that I do have Mr. Ferris with his hand raised again. So I don't know if you want to give him a chance to talk one more time, or do you just want to go ahead and open public comment?
Let the other members of the public speak and then we'll see if the commission wants to hear from Mr. Ferris again.
Perfect. So we're now open public comment for item number two. If your hand is raised, your name will be called for this item. I will lower your hand after you speak. Those joining by telephone can press star nine to raise or unraise your hand. So I will first call on Mr. Ron Snow. Mr. Snow, please unmute your microphone and begin speaking, and you will have five minutes.
All right, and nice to speak with you again, Commissioners. This, this developer has demonstrated just disregard for the county and the neighbors. What hasn't been brought up in here is the complaints from Harrison Way where the fence was destroyed by the developer to access the property. I think one of the things that, when Steve was talking, I was at that supervisors' meeting a few years ago when this division was going through, and top on the priority list was the protection of the trees. And planning has sort of acknowledged this by the fact that they have noted that the driveway was moved thirty feet. And that was to protect the trees. The neighborhood and the neighbors were concerned about the canopy of the neighborhood, and that included this tree number seventeen. It should not, the neighbors should have had due process on their request to appeal this. The, the I have like twenty notes here and I'm trying to rush through them. I think, I think one of the things is that, that the idea that this had to be rushed to, there was a rush to remove the tree, brings up a couple of things. One is, what has county done to pursue action against the tree removal company? Because I am sure that there has to be some disregard of safety and protocols and guidelines in cutting a tree that isn't in an emergency situation during a storm and at night. That's just not normally allowed, and I think there must be some legal ways that council ought to pursue against that tree cutter. Also, it doesn't make sense that the developer was made aware in the afternoon that the appeal process was valid and that it was moving forward. And then he didn't take action, or she, or the company, the developer didn't take action, then to halt all of the actions that they had put in place. The other thing I would say is that it seems to be some questions here. It's pretty sketchy about this aspect that that tree had to be removed by, under contract on that day, or they'd lose their deposit. I think it means that maybe the commission should extend this, retain the moratorium on this property, extend this to the next commission meeting, and have the contractor provide the original contract and provisions of the deposit and the, everything associated with that, so that you can review that and see if these people are telling the truth or not. It just doesn't make sense that this needed to happen in the dead of darkness on a windy, stormy day. So I think we're all clear on that, but the disregard of the developers of county, of our ordinances, of our, our community standards and wishes as far as preserving the canopy should the developer should be paying attention to that. He shouldn't be breaking down fences without permission on Harrison Way. He shouldn't be cutting down trees in, that, as Greg has mentioned, could have easily fall the other way and hit his house. So I urge you to, it sounds like you, to me, you need to look into this deeper, that the moratorium on this should be extended until the next, at least to the next commission meeting where some of this evidence can be put forward to you. There is this aspect of just disregard of county, that's one issue. Whether the tree should be removed or not is sort of another issue. And to do this after the fact is just not right. There's lots of reasons why that tree could have been preserved. The developer could have used a different floor plan. The developer could have adjusted the position, could have appealed to planning to make an exception to move the house in a different situation or have different setbacks. So there's lots of ways to preserve a tree if that's what we want. And if you look at it from Crocus Court, that tree and all the rest of the neighbors is very visible and very prominent as part of the neighborhood. So please deny this thing. I mean, I'm sorry, can I finish that? Please uphold the, don't, don't issue, I should say, don't issue the after fact permit. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Snow. I will now call on Kelly Holzrechter, followed by Eric Chung. Kelly, hold on just one second. Sorry, I think I lost her. Kelly, can you hear us? Okay, I'll give her, oh, here she is.
There, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't figure out how to unmute myself. So I, my name is Kelly Holzrechter, and I live at thirty-five Harrison Way, which is directly behind this property. I didn't really have too strong of a feelings until I heard the lawyer representing these owners speak. I mean, I felt like the tree is done. I mentioned in some emails, I find it somewhat reprehensible that you would charge six hundred some odd dollars for an appeal, which really is a mute point because then three hours later, the tree is cut down. And the fee for the tree is four thousand dollars. That seems crazy to me, but I understand now that's your policies. I want to make something clear, just for the record, I'm staring at an email from the owner of this property at three twelve P M on the day this happened. And he is asking the county to set up a meeting to discuss. So there is no mention in that email that he's on a timeline to cut this tree down. I also find it, if you go back to that date, that was the worst day of the storm, right? The worst day of the storm in this winter season. It's the same day that dropped over six feet of snow in the Sierras. There is no way on this earth that a responsible arborist or a tree cutting service would go in the dead of night when it's pouring rain and gusty winds and cut down a tree. They also would not do it in the manner in which they did it, which was basically a hack job that dropped a fifty-foot tree. So let's just like, there's no reason to sit up here and lie and make excuses. It's insulting and frustrating for us neighbors who have been working with numerous developers on this project for many years. We're trying to find a responsible way to develop that property. We'd like to see it developed, but we would also like to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood and the houses around it. So the fact that we're now saying all this stuff, I don't know what repercussions there should be, but like, let's stop lying. Okay, it's, they cut it down. They received notice at three o'clock. And by six o'clock, they had some people out there hacking down a fifty-foot tree. You can go back to the photos and see it was hacked down. It was not responsibly done, cut limbs or branches. That tree could have fallen anyway. It, they were very lucky. It did not fall on the Harris's house. But the Harris's son did not need to be on their property trespassing because he could see it from their own yard. Okay, so let, that's just, I'm sorry, my frustration's coming through. That's mostly what I wanted to say. I also want to understand what is going to prevent them from chopping down any other trees. There are huge redwood trees that we have worked with the county and previous owners to preserve over the course of the years. And I just, for four thousand dollars, that's not even the cost of a garage door, right? They could go chop down whatever they want, and there are no repercussions for them. Do I want them to be punished? That's not really, it's not what it's about. It's about how do we maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods and the houses and the communities in which we currently live, without people just coming in and doing whatever the heck they want to it? It's dangerous. They have, it was my fence that they took down. We have an easement. Five months ago, they took it down to work on the drainage systems. They never spoke to me about it. Again, it's five months. I think there may be, ironically, they can't fix it today because it's raining, right? So they can't build a fence, but they can chop down a tree in the rain. These are just things that are, it's frustrating as an owner, and I don't, I feel like it's up to the county to protect its neighborhoods and the people in those neighborhoods. And that includes developers. I'm not anti-development. I just want it to be done responsibly and safely. That's all I have to say.
Chair Ketchum, I understand that Janice has got some computer troubles, and so she's trying to log back on. I believe that the next person in order of speaking is under the name of Rich. So Rich, I will allow you to talk at the moment. And please begin speaking.
Hi, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do I have the ability to share my screen?
No, I'm sorry, you do not.
Michael, I think you had the presentation that Alicia emailed. If you can pull that up and share that, that'd be great. Just want to go into the tree three seventeen thing so everyone understands clearly.
Do you represent the applicant?
Yes, a part of the Highland Solutions and.
Already spent extensive amount of time for the applicant to present. If you're available to answer questions, that would be a fine, but I think the public deserves a chance to speak now.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Eric Chung, I think, had has his hand raised.
Eric, can you hear me? Go ahead, please. Thank you.
I just, I just want to be clear. I am the public, however, I'm actually part of Highland Solutions. Is that okay if I speak, Commissioner? I noticed that, I think the appellant also had a chance to speak.
This, this is for the public and everybody connected with the applicant, as I understand it. We gave extra time for that presentation. So if there is anything, any questions that the commissioners have that were not answered during that time, if you have those answers, but I don't want to just be circling around the same.
Let's catch him if I may.
Please.
I recommend that you accept public comment from anybody raising their hand and not attempt to differentiate between people based on their support for the project or affiliation with the developer or the appellants. It just becomes, we don't have a process for differentiating between raised hands who are in one category and raised hands are in another, and I don't recommend implementing that.
All right, thank you.
But may I?
Yes.
Mr. Fox, I mean, can these people who are part of the applicant come back when we are in deliberations and asking questions?
Well, if there are questions that the commission wishes to ask, any public commenter, it's wisest to do that right after they've made their comment because we don't really have a very robust system for bringing people back over to panelist status. And, you know, if there are technological issues, it kind of gets in the way of the flow of the discussion. I mean, when we set the time for the appellant and the applicant to each give their presentations, if a person didn't speak during that time, I just don't see a very practical way to say that they should have.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chung. Five minutes.
Hi, yeah, thank you. So I actually got to speak from two perspectives. One is that as a perspective of developer and the other perspective of sort of the community, and I'll go through the reasons why. So as a perspective of the developer, I want to just reemphasize that we have been following rules all along and very consistently. We have met with the county number of times. I personally have showed up to the county number of times in person before COVID, of course, talking and had various discussions, getting permits and everything else. Also, I want to point out that we're not some evil organizations here. We're just mere mortals. In fact, just individuals grouped together. So I don't think that you should treat us as if we're a giant corporation with a publicly traded company because we're not. In regards to planning protections, I think that we also read through that very carefully. With Mr. Holbrook, before he, before he left, we had actually gone through very precisely line by line to understand what the requirements are and we follow them very precisely. In fact, we have two arborists working on this project with us all along, including our own and the counties. And Arborist Matt Friedland, he's been really consistently advising us how to protect trees. He is actually a strong advocate of the environment in his himself. His company is called Hartwood. And I, he and I talked all the time about what is the right thing to do about erosion control, about tree protection. He advises us how to better protect plants and we consistently do that. And then also in regards to just kind of helping the community, we have already paid, we are intending to pay all fees and including school fees for all three schools, which are not small amounts. I actually personally went to the district to pay for school fees two weeks ago. This is part of that too. Regarding the floor plan, I want to reemphasize how that the driveway was moved because of the intention of protecting the oak tree. And because of that reason, the trees, the houses themselves have minimized the footprints to accommodate for the moved driveway. That was part of the consideration from a board supervisor approval, approval a while ago. And to think that we didn't care about the oak tree is incorrect because we had to build this driveway to accommodate that completely. Now that said, I think that there's a notion of people caring about the community and whatnot. I think I want to put a different hat on at this moment that I'm not necessarily the developer, but the head of the community. And I say that because I've been a California resident for over twenty years. I love this, I love this place. I really care about how we look. Every time I drive on the road, I look at trees to see how well the neighborhood is built. But furthermore, I was actually a Stanford alum myself. I lived actually very close. When I was in school at Stanford, I actually lived very close to this particular spot. I used to play, I used to play golf and bike around in that area. So I actually also have a vested interest in the community, the way that looks, how it presents itself. So in terms of overall, I really recommend that we reject, we lift the moratorium because the site as it's right now is definitely an eyesore that we just want to get past and make the, make the place look good again and make the whole, the whole neighborhood look good. But with the moratorium in place, we simply cannot do that. So, so just resummarizing, what I'm trying to say here is two spots, two things. One, we're not an evil organization trying to do all these things. We're individuals bound together to form this venture. And we have followed all the rules all along, including hiring extra arborists to help this project. In terms of being a community, I also would like that area to look good for the long run. I intend to be in that area consistently and for a long time too. So that's it.
Thank you. Shall we circle back to Rich? Had asked to speak.
Um, let's see, there you go, yes, okay. Rich, please accept my invitation. I'll use your mic and begin speaking and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, but I'm not sure if Michael was able to get the, the presentation up, but basically we, you know, we bought this project. It was a, I know there was a battle and I know that certain trees were meant to be saved, including tree three. As Eric spoke, the road turns to accommodate tree three, which reduces the footprint. And as I found out today, I didn't even know this, I guess the county ordinances have been changed to adjust and accommodate tree three for the specific project. So we've tried and we've tried, we've repented the replacement trees right away. We, I personally sent that email at midnight and said, hey, guys, I haven't heard back on the appeal. The letter of decision basically says after the appeal period, which was January twenty sixth F I P M, you can proceed. You know, and so that's what we did. And I sincerely apologize because I have tried to reach out to, to, you know, everyone. And I think the biggest challenge we have here, you know, as, as members of the public is that there should just be like one centralized email thread where neighbors can communicate, you know, with neighbors. And, you know, we're not having this, this miscommunication that's going on here. I strongly feel that we should have, we should have been notified officially. Myself, I am on the tree application permit. So I feel that whoever's on the permit should be the person that gets notified. And I just, I just wasn't notified of the appeal. I did, you know, proactively reach out, but generally the deposit was nonrefundable. We do have a severe housing shortage, you know, and we understand that the project density was reduced from four homes to three homes. So we're trying to accommodate everything that was already negotiated and agreed upon, you know, like Steve said, if, if, if I, you know, if I knew about it, I would have just, I would have looked at, you know, the best way is like, if you could share the driveway with Crocus, then all those trees would be saved. But, you know, it just didn't happen. But I wanted to apologize especially to the neighbors because the, the storm drain, there was some backwater on parts that's being fixed right now. And I know how frustrating it's been. I've been there. I drove by. I saw the, I saw the bulldozer. So I understand the frustration and to Greg, I also have three kids and I definitely wouldn't want to put them in any danger. And we did not tell the tree person to cut it a specific way, so we had no control. But we did plant the red holly oak in compliance with the letter of decision. So in conclusion, we paid our school fees. We really want to build in San Mateo County. There's a housing crisis, you know. Rents, rents are still crazy. We have a gap of four hundred forty one thousand missing housing units. And I know that they just passed S B three thirty, but you know, we want to, we want to try to just make, make this project good, finish this project. And we also are, as part of our landscape plans, we were, we're planning thirteen replacement trees and spending over a hundred fifty thousand dollars in landscaping. So again, you know, despite the county arborists finding that tree three was actually in bad form, we've respected the decision of the prior developer. We're, we're making that road turn. The building footprint is suffering. And we respectfully, you know, request that the county please lift the work order. Eric has actually fallen into the trench that's out right now and he's gotten bloody. So it's really an unsafe condition. We don't want anyone, neighbors or otherwise to walk on the lot right now. So I appreciate the time of everyone in this commission. I know it's hard, but we did everything in compliance. We have emails that show that we were, you know, our tension was there. And honestly, if someone had just notified us of the appeal right away, probably eight o'clock, then that tree would have been, that tree, we would have held that tree, but honestly, we had inclement weather. It was raining in the morning. There was a gap. So we just left it up to the tree person to, to decide. But again, the bigger picture is, you know, we have lack of housing in the area and it's, it's just sad. We need to build better housing stock and we know there was objections to building affordable housing or townhomes in the area. So we just want to build these three homes, finish the project, plant our thirteen new trees. We've already planted the two replacement trees and we want to move forward. And we sincerely apologize for everyone that, you know, on the experience. We think that there should be better communication and we're always open to that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's see, I will next call on Roberta Morris. And also just wanted to point out that you can only raise your hand one time for agenda item, please. So, Roberta, please accept my invitation. I'm using your mic and begin speaking. Roberta?
Thank you. I first want to say to Ms. Luhana, someone who's tried to run Zoom meetings, I am very, very impressed by what you've been doing here. A couple of points in response to some things. First, the satellite picture of the tree, tree seventeen and the heritage joke and the, and the Santa Cruz trees. It's clear from the shadows that the heritage tree and tree seventeen both have huge shadows. They're very tall. And if you look at the trees along Santa Cruz, they're not casting much shadows. They're all responding to the same sun. So we know that the very tall tree is visible. I've had this in my neighborhood where someone says, oh, you can't see that tree. Well, you can. If you walk down the street, you can see the tall trees. If you come from the other direction, you can see the tall trees. So tall trees really do matter and create part of the atmosphere. Second, I would just like to say a word about asking forgiveness being easier than asking permission. That is kind of an arrogant and selfish perspective and usually reflects that the person asking forgiveness has more power than the person granting either permission or, or forgiveness. So it, it's not, it's always a questionable thing to me morally and ethically to ask for forgiveness. Third, regarding the, the planting of new trees, generally speaking, when the tree ordinance, if the tree ordinance is revised, there ought to be a fund so that if substitute trees suffer injury, damage, death, et cetera, that the person who planted those, those trees has given into the fund, especially when it's developers. Maybe for the elderly, there would be less of a, of a payment, but there has to be funds because developers can damage roots even of brand new trees, damage the ground, do things that make that mitigated tree dead in a very short time. And I'd just like to get to the kind of more general points. I, in reviewing the timeline, it seems to me that the developer has disrespected the planning commission's procedures. It's disrespected the planning commission itself, disrespected the board of supervisors in enacting the tree ordinance, disrespected the people of San Mateo County who are the intended beneficiaries of those ordinances and has disrespected due process, the rule of law and democracy. The development, the developer may have had a very good history, but this particular act is very egregious. It looks like short term self-interest was put above every other consideration. And I also find it hard to believe that the developer's bargaining power, either with the free removal company or with the banks on the loans is so terrible that they couldn't negotiate more time or an extension so as not to lose, lose the free removal deposit, which as people pointed out was for a small amount of money for their loans. Yes, I completely agree that San Mateo County needs developers. They create jobs. They improve the housing stock. They add to the tax base. But we need the good ones, the ones who play by the rules, the ones who respect the hardworking people in the planning commission and, and respect our county government and respect the people of the county who live here, pay the sales taxes and property taxes directly or through rent. That's to put our local governments who deserve, as the tree ordinance recognizes the shade, the cooling effect, the beauty, carbon sequestration and oxygen, wildlife habitat, the beauty of having significant inherited trees. If the tree ordinance's teeth are going to be ripped out by people asking for forgiveness after they haven't got permission, then have the decency to repeal the tree ordinance, having it on the books. If it's just empty words is wrong. I urge the commission to consider sanctions such as continuing this moratorium, but in the future, not having this developer get permits in this county until we can see that the moral and ethical standards that should be applied are applied every time. Even if this is a one time lapse, this is what a pretty big one time lapse. I know I'm speaking strong words, but the course of conduct in this case is outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think everyone who has asked to speak has had a turn. May I have a motion to close public comment?
I saw moving that we closed the public portion.
I second. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta?
I.
Commissioner Hansen?
I.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I.
Chair Ketchum?
I.
Thank you.
Public comment on this item is now closed. Does staff wish to speak on any of the issues raised?
Yes, thank you, Chair Ketchum. I think from the commissioners questioning and the court, the testimony we've received from the public, I, I just want to say that we share everybody's concern about the way in which this was carried out in the course of events that occurred here and to suggest that it was somehow the fault of the county for not corresponding is offensive, honestly. And while I really share the distaste of what's happened with the neighborhood, we need to stay focused on what our legal authority to do is in these circumstances. With regard to the penalties here and what's appropriate, this was revisited by the planning commission and the board, I want to say maybe two years ago. And we adjusted fines. But the equations that we came up with at the time in retrospect, perhaps is not appropriate in the current circumstances, but as Mr. Fox pointed out, those are the rules in place and we, we feel that we have applied the penalties that we are unable to under the circumstances. And at this point, we need to come to a resolution on the matters in front of the commission, which is not a question about the penalties per se, but a question as to whether or not the tree, tree removal permit should be granted. So in circumstances where we have to look at this after the fact, I, I think my recommendation to the commission is that you consider the circumstances if the tree was still there. If, if that tree was still there, what would be your decision on whether or not its removal is appropriate, given the constraints of the site and the right of the property owner to make a reasonable economic use? And what, if I can help answer any questions about that, I'm happy to do so. I'm also happy to answer any other questions the commissioners may. So I'll turn it back to you, Chair Ketchum.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, thank you. This is a very difficult situation here. I hear what Mr. Monowitz is saying as far as like, you know, take a look at it from a perspective of the tree being there. Would I approve it? But I can't do that. I mean, the fact that tree is already gone. And I don't have that perspective anymore. I mean, I, I have a strong desire to impose, you know, heavier penalties. But as Mr. Fox has already pointed out, the, you know, heaviest penalties that can be given at this time have already been assessed. So where do we go? I mean, what I would say in general going forward is that maybe we need to revisit and see, you know, if we should change the penalties or how we could actually make it stronger. But at this point, I mean, there's only one thing to do, basically, you know. If we deny it, I mean, what are we denying? I mean, the thing is already done. We cannot impose heavier penalties. So at this point, I'd just say, maybe the county can do a better job of advertising to the public, you know, that we care about trees and that there should be heavy penalties for removing trees without a permit, without going through the process. I am very upset with the developer or, you know, as a contractor, because I think this gives contractors, developers, a really bad name out there. And that's why people are so distrustful of, you know, people who do the right thing. Most of the time, there's one or two that doesn't do the right thing. And then that gives everybody a bad name. So I'm really upset about that. So, yeah, so I'll let the other ones talk and see where we go with this. But, you know, overall, I'm very upset with this situation.
With the permission of the chair, I just want to respond to Commissioner Ramirez's comment about the desire to revisit the penalties because we have been working on an update to the tree regulations. And that will be moving forward. And that will include an analysis of the fees and how they should be updated. So that is definitely on the horizon.
Steve, I'm sorry. Would you mind turning off your camera, Steve? I think it gets choppy, but if you turn off your camera, I think we'll hear you better. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah. Yesterday, I was driving home from Oregon on Interstate 5. Speed limit in that portion of Interstate 5 is 70 miles per hour. This whole process reminds me of yesterday because you could hide behind the process. Speed limit is 70, means you can go 70. It was snowing, there was ice in the road, there was snow in the road. I couldn't see what the signs were because I know somewhere along the way, it stops down to 65 and later to 55, couldn't see them. But the process says I can go whatever speed is safe. What is that? No one identified me, no one said change should be put on because it just happened. Doesn't mean it's right to do. You've got to use common sense. I remember that day very well because I remember listening to news saying it's going to be 40 mile per hour gust in the bay with 90 mile gusts on the ridge lines. Okay, so I know my mom's car, which is parked in front of my house. I didn't move my mom's car. But that night, the cedar tree next door came down and smashed it. Now, I knew there was a chance. And can you imagine not de-limming a tree that was normally done in the dark, in a storm, and calling that safe? It's beyond that. You know, I would continue the moratorium because I think OSHA standards were abused. I think maybe we need to have the developer take some safety lessons as a developer and what they should do to remember about a neighborhood. I probably think we should take the time to find out that there are additional fines that should be proposed for putting everybody, the tree climbers at risk, anybody in the neighborhood in the middle of the storm. There are things we could need to do. We just can't say, well, it happened and there's not much we can do. There are, you know, if the highway patrolman pulled me over because I was doing, pick your favorite speed because almost all of it was unsafe. You know, okay, give me a fine for speeding. Maybe I was doing 35 when I should be doing 20 or whatever, you know, pay my $200, walk away. Or better yet, be the, go to the traffic fines thing and sit and watch the safety vehicles films and stuff like that. I think the whole thing needs to be assessed before we move on and see if they are qualified to handle anything more going forward. That's my comment.
Commissioner Gupta.
I hear Steve. And he's right in his own ways. And both my fellow commissioners, they have made some very valid points. The bottom line is the tree is gone. It's not there. So I'm thinking, how can we prevent this from happening in the future? And even Mr. Snow, Ron Snow, mentioned that these kind of situations are taken very lightly by the developers. The good thing is, from what I hear from Director Steve Monowitz, that there is work going on on improving the tree ordinance for the county, which is great. Yeah, these need to be reviewed very often so that as we come across these different kinds of scenarios. So I'm really having a hard time approving the permit. I think the developer disregarded the county ordinance, disregarded the safety. And in order to set a precedence that this is not acceptable, how do we move forward? So I'm still thinking. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Well, I agree with my colleagues and the neighbors, what they said was very affecting. And Robert Morris, who so elegantly described her feelings, the arrogance and disrespect. And that, and I understand staff's saying that we need to just focus on this is a tree removal as though it were there, but it does make one choke. And I, and also I have been involved on the tree raid update with the county, which has been dormant for some years now. And whatever good could come out of this, hopefully it will feed into that final version of that ordinance that the goals of the county in protecting trees as they're described sound very good. But clearly, the the application of the regulations is inadequate. So as far as a specific, maybe we need to, for a motion for today, do we need to go around again for further discussion? Or somebody raise your hand here. See, Dr. Monowitz.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. Only in the interest of being assistance, in assistance to the commission. And I'll take Janice's advice to turn off my video so I don't break up. I just thought I would lay out, I think, the options that are before you today. And those include adoption of the staff recommendation to approve the, uphold the approval of the tree removal permit. And I guess that's just because when I look back upon our view on the circumstances before it was removed, we truly believed it was appropriate, given the site constraints and the location of the tree. But if that's not the pleasure of the commission, your other options are to continue the item. Perhaps there is additional information that you'd like to see before arriving at a decision. Or you could deny the tree removal permit. I think in any of those three cases, your decision will be appealable to the board of supervisors, which I think is likely. So unless Council Fox has anything to add to that, I'll conclude my comments there.
The only thing I'd like to add is that the practice of the commission is to dispose of business by making motions that either adopt findings that are proposed by staff or propose their own new findings. And so if it were the will of the commission to take action to deny the permits, I would strongly recommend that you direct staff to bring back recommended factual findings for denial that are consistent with the adopted ordinances of the county with regard to tree removal permits so that the action taken by the commission is sustainable against a challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
The, on the face of this, as Dr. Monowitz said, I don't see how we can deny the after-the-fact permit. And I understand the feelings running high here, outrage. But I don't see how they can be addressed with the actions that are before us today.
Right.
So going against, you know, you know, every feeling that one has on this matter, again, because I think at this point, as it has been stated, I mean, the maximum amount of penalties based on the ordinance that we have on hand has been handed out. With that, I'm going to accept the recommendation of the planning commission, I mean, of the staff. And I will make a motion to deny the appeal on the basis that the criteria for the tree removal established by the significant tree ordinance has been met and approved and the after-the-fact removal permit. As per county file number PLN 2020-00443, by making the findings for the approval, including the attachment, including attachment A of the staff report.
Do you have a second? I'll second it. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta. Commissioner Gupta.
I'll say I hoping that we get to look at it and improvise on our tree ordinance so that this kind of thing doesn't happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
May.
Commissioner Ramirez.
I.
Chair Ketchum.
I. So the motion is approved. Three, two, one, Hanson opposed.
And if I may say something on this, I mean, I mean, I hope that it gets appealed to the board of supervisors. I'm not saying that, you know, this is the right thing and see if they also have a different point of view on this. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what else to say on that. That's it, thank you.
Okay, does anyone want a short break before we go on to the next item or report ahead?
Five minutes would be nice for me, thanks.
All right, so we'll come back at 11:30.
Thank you.
Yonah, move your mics.
Are we all here? Should we get started?
Janice, are you there?
I think, yeah, I think we're all here.
I don't know that I hear Janice yet. Morning, commissioners.
Uh, I don't know that I hear Janice yet. Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Hello, everybody. I'm here. And so if you'd like to get started, Camille, maybe you could read the item into the record for us.
Uh, sure.
Oh, I see Janice now.
Okay.
Oh, no, I see her, but I don't think she's back yet.
Okay, yeah. So we're on item three, which applicant county is San Mateo Planning and Building. Location, all areas of unincorporated county, consideration of a recommendation to the board of supervisors of a zoning text amendment, creating new chapter twenty two point two childcare centers of the zoning regulations, repealing section sixty four oh one point two general provisions relating to large family daycare homes and also related text amendments to the county zoning regulations for various zoning districts to reconcile those regulations with the new chapter. The new chapter will regulate childcare centers in the unincorporated areas of San Mateo County. Direct questions to project planner Camille Young.
Thanks, Camille. You can go ahead and proceed with the presentation.
Okay, let me share my screen. Can you all see my screen? Yes, yes. Okay, great. Thank you. So the new San Mateo childcare ordinance would apply to the county's areas of jurisdiction, unincorporated areas outside of city limits. It would apply in the Bayside, which is a non-coastal area as well as in the coastal zone once it's certified by the Coastal Commission. It does exclude areas and city limits. Since it's a little complicated with there's a there's a section of regulations that applies to the Bayside and a slightly different section of regulation that applies to the coastal zone. I've used color coding on these slides. Gray slides apply to all areas. Bay slides apply to the Bayside and blue slides apply to the coastal zone. So hopefully that will help. So our current regulation does not regulate small family daycares because they are allowed by right and they include a residence-based daycare home that can also provide childcare for up to eight children. Our regulations do regulate large family daycare homes, which is up to fourteen children, still residence-based with someone living there. And a ministerial permit is required so long as criteria is met. And then for childcare centers, there's no countywide regulations pertaining to childcare centers. It's a bit of a patchwork of regulations, which the use is allowed by right in three North Far Oaks zoning districts, but otherwise generally requires a use permit, which, as you know, requires a public hearing and can be a lengthy, expensive process for childcare providers. So in twenty seventeen, the San Mateo County Childcare, sorry, the San Mateo County Office of Education performed a childcare preschool needs assessment and found largest large deficits in the county for childcare services, specifically in Burlingame, Rubble City, Daly City, Menlo Park, Montero, and Pacifica, where only a, you know, a portion of the demand was met in these particular areas, largely under fifty percent. So the problems with our current regulations is there's no countywide regulation. It can be confusing. Regulations are outdated. They do. There are conflicts with state regulations specifically pertaining to capacity of small and large daycare centers, which are our regulations are out of step with the states. And also use permits required in most instances. It can be costly, unpredictable too, whether as far as whether the use permit is granted and can be time consuming. As you know, ministerial permits do not require public notice in advance of a decision. There's no hearing. There's no appeal process. It's a checklist process where if all of the ministerial permit criteria are met, a ministerial permit is granted. And so the overarching goal of the childcare ordinance is to ease and incentivize the expansion of childcare services in San Mateo County, removing those planning hurdles. The goals of the new ordinance are to establish countywide regulation, which is consistent with state requirements to expedite the process for childcare centers under compatible conditions, to provide a program that authorizes unpermitted childcare facilities, of which the county is is not aware of any actually. But should one come to light? And then also deprive incentives for childcare centers in employment centers. So new development that incorporates a childcare center with a business employment center or within a transit-oriented development. So we want to incentivize those types of projects. The new ordinance would not require permits for small or large family daycare homes. There's a state Senate bill which was adopted by the governor. I think over a year ago now that allows large family daycare homes to be considered a residential use and is thereby permitted by right within a residence. So that brings the our county regulations in line with the states. It would establish a ministerial permit for childcare centers, which meet particular criteria, including conversion of existing buildings of a similar use in terms of purpose, intensity, and parking needs. And we're identifying uses of a similar purpose being commercial or institutional uses. Portion of a building within an exist within existing compatible use, say, within a existing business where a particular portion is carved out to put an onsite childcare center or say even a multifamily apartment complex where a portion of that building would be converted to a childcare use. And the ministerial permit would also allow for minor or even major additions in particular instances. And then it also maintains a use permit process for those projects, childcare projects that do not meet the ministerial permit criteria, which would be very similar to what we have now. The ministerial permit criteria, which is essentially the new, which is essentially the project of this ordinance, since it's a new process that does not currently exist for childcare centers in San Mateo County unincorporated. And it it sets the criteria based on environmental criteria, based on SEQA, which outside of the coastal zone and based on coastal development exemption criteria in the coastal zone. And the thought is that you can, if you convert an existing building with a similar use, you're you're not really causing a large impact in terms of that site or the surrounding area. And also, SEQA would allow for a new building to be built for a childcare center outside of the coastal zone if all the criteria are met, which are largely based in SEQA. And then also, the argument too is that the conversion of a portion of a building with a compatible use would also not create large impacts on the site or within the area if the criteria are met. So I will now discuss the ordinances allow allowance of the conversion of existing buildings with similar uses in the Bayside areas and then later in the coastal area. So this is the Bayside area. And the draft ordinance would allow for conversion of a commercial space, institutional space. And these designations are general plan land use designations or zoning designations, commercial zoning. So commercial spaces, institutional spaces, commercial residential mixed-use spaces, as well as single-family conversion of single-family residences. Also, the conversion of existing institutional buildings or multi, or sorry, or public facilities. And these are outside of the zoning designations or general plan designations. But if they if a building should exist as an institute with an institutional use or a public facility use, it can be converted under a ministerial permit in the Bayside area. So this is a table that's extracted from the ordinance for the Bayside area. And it would allow the location of a childcare center in an existing building in these designated areas. The criteria listed below, the site has to be zoned or designated by the general plan. Or as, you know, for these uses or within an existing institutional building or public facility. The ordinance would allow for expansion of up to fifty percent of the floor of the structure before the addition or twenty five hundred, whichever is lost. And outside of environmentally sensitive areas, as defined in the ordinance, antecedent corridors, it would allow up to a ten thousand square feet expansion with the childcare center. And a new building would be allowed in the Bayside areas within a commercial or institutional zoning district. If these criteria are met, there's a zoning designation or a general plan designation for these two types of uses. And you can have up to a new building up to ten thousand in the urban areas and up to twenty five hundred in the rural areas if the site is served by public utilities and roads and not located within an environmentally sensitive area or scenic corridor. This, um, these maps, which I also included in the negative declaration are they're essentially those areas that are zoned or designated for commercial or institutional use. The green is commercial or mixed-use districts and the yellow is the institutional land use designation. So while these are those areas that are designated, they also have to meet the other criteria in order for a childcare center to be located here with the ministerial permit process. So they're they're largely conceptual and just to visualize where such a use could go. And they do not, these maps don't show the existing institutional buildings or public facilities, which could be looked at at a site-by-site basis. So these are the areas in North Far Oaks. Green, commercial, yellow, institutional. There's also areas within Broadmore, unincorporated Colma, Scoia, Scoia Track, West Menlo Park. Just your usual, the main commercial areas and some institutional sites. Also in La Honda, Ladera, Emerald Lake Hills, Highlands, it's Highlands and Menlo Oaks. And these are institutional. And there's also an area here in Ladera that's commercial, which is the shopper. So going now to the coastal zone. One could, under this ordinance, one could locate a childcare center within an existing building in an institutional or commercial zoning district or within an institutional building or public facility, so long as these criteria are met, that there's either a zoning or designation for those uses or an existing building or public facility. Design review standards would still apply. The, if the site is located within the Coastal Commission appeals jurisdiction or scenic corridor, expansion is limited ten percent of the existing internal floor area allowed under a ministerial permit with no additional stories or lofts. The site would need to be served by public utilities and roads and doesn't involve expansion of wells or septic systems. It could not result in the conversion of a visitor-serving commercial use or be located within a sensitive habitat or buffer zone. And the reason why I highlighted the last two are because while I had said previously that the criteria is based on the coastal permit exemption criteria, staff has added these two additional criteria just to make it more clear about the sensitive habitat and buffer zone. I think it's implied in the CDX criteria and also added the visitor-serving commercial use to protect those uses. So these are the areas that are either zoned or designated for commercial or institutional use. And they're just the downtown areas of the mid-coast as well as one or two parcels in the unincorporated half of the Bay Area, which I believe is a parking lot. Serving a nursery. And let's see, also in the rural areas in Pescadero, San Gregorio, these would be the areas that could locate a talker center under a ministerial permit so long as the criteria are met. I wanted to do a slide on Pescadero specifically because there are some flooding hazards in Pescadero. There's a floodway and flood plain areas that go through the downtown area, quote unquote, of Pescadero. Pescadero, in order to locate one, a childcare center in one of those buildings, those buildings, I would have to say are largely one to three feet below the established base flood elevation. So there, this could trigger, you know, the conversion of those spaces to a childcare center could trigger an intensification of use, which would take them out of ministerial permit criteria if the current capacity of the building is exceeded by the childcare use capacity. And then also if if substantial improvement is needed, so if there is some expansion of those buildings needed for the childcare center or if there's just an upgrade that's over the fifty percent valuation of the existing structure, then the structure would have to be raised to the base flood elevation plus one. And if there's an increase in the intensification of use, the BFE, sorry, the the floor would have to be raised to the base flood elevation, which could be approximately one to three feet above the current floor elevation of those structures. So, well, it would be more difficult. There is, there is a, there is a path forward for a childcare center in those areas. So now we'll talk about how the ordinance would allow the conversion of single-family residences to childcare centers in both Bayside areas and coastal zone areas. On the Bayside, one could convert a single-family residence or a portion of a multifamily residential building to a childcare center, including some amount of expansion. A single-family residence could be located in a residential area, a mixed-use area, or a commercial zoning district. You'll see those non-conforming houses in those areas sometimes. Those houses could be converted to a childcare center if the property is of conforming size. And it could be located in an urban or rural area. Parking would need to be met and it would be one parking space for every six children enrolled. So assuming there's four parking spaces at a typical house location, two in the garage and two in the driveway, you could have up to twenty four kids at that location. Expansion would have to be compliant with the development standards of the zoning district and design review would apply. And even though the residential use would be replaced with a childcare center use, since it would be in an existing residence within a larger residential neighborhood, we would apply the designer review standards pertaining to homes to the childcare center. So there's a lot of zoning districts. There's sorry, there's a lot of residential zoning districts on the Bayside. This is just a list of them. Residential includes, you know, multifamily residential districts as well as Plan Colma, residential states and Emerald Lake Hills, the RH zoning district. There can also be, you know, that non-conforming house in the mixed-use or commercials in a district. The parcel would have to be conforming size and designer review would apply. So now going to the coastal zone, one could convert a single-family residence on a parcel that's ten thousand square feet or larger, and that's the main difference between the Bayside and the Coastside for converting of single-family residences. If all the following criteria are met, it's the same parking requirement. The parcel size is ten thousand. Design review district would apply with standards pertaining to residences applied. They could be located in a single-family exclusion zone or even outside the single-family exclusion zone, although expansion would be limited to ten percent within the exclusion, outside the exclusion zone and within the appeals jurisdiction and scenic corridor. If there's a need for an expansion of water wells and septic systems, that would trigger a use permit. Also, no development could be in the sensitive habitat or buffer zone. And also, this is the main difference too with the Bayside is that any new building And also, this is the main difference too with the bayside, is that any new building within the coastal zone would trigger the use permit requirement and a CDP. So these are the areas, G I, our G I S section helped me to identify all the parcels that are ten thousand square feet or larger in the residential areas of the mid-coast. You'll see the blue, so the parcels are shown in beige that are ten thousand square feet or greater, and the blue line shows the single-family exclusion zone. So those outside of the single-family exclusion zone, you could still locate a childcare center with a ministerial permit, just expansion would be limited. And then you can see the coastal commission appeals jurisdiction areas in orange, which would also, the expansion would be limited in those areas as well. And also in Pescadero, there's areas of residential parcels over ten thousand square feet. And of course, the, the special flood hazard zones, the same requirements would apply. These, there's a few parcels in San Gregorio. So the county is making the argument to the coastal commission that converting a single-family residence to a childcare center is not an intensification of use. And our argument is based on the SB two-three-four, which states, which basically permitted large family daycare homes of up to fourteen children as a residential use and permitted by right by state law. So comparing that with a home that, sorry, a home that's converted to a childcare center with up to twenty-four kids. And the main difference between those scenarios is that someone's still living in the large family childcare home, while the childcare center with twenty-four kids would not contain residents. Also, the, the, there's a proportional, there's requirements to ensure proportionality, which is the parking requirement that the county is imposing of one parking space for every six children. And also, we are imposing a ten thousand square feet parcel size, minimum size for the conversion of childcare, conversion of residences to childcare centers. So those are, those are things that we're adding to ensure further proportionality. So for childcare centers that do not meet either bayside or coast side ministerial permit criteria, a use permit process is still required. There is a public hearing. The only thing that is different is that I believe the appeals are limited. They believe it could only be appealed to the board. Anyway, appeals are limited. I need to look into that. And then also, the use permit would not require renewal. And then also, there, the typical uses that would require a use permit where there really isn't a ministerial permit process for it would be, say, if a childcare center were located in the manufacturing zoning district, or if there's a new building in a residential zoning district where they're tearing down the home and just building like a brand-new child, more childcare center facility looking like building. Or conversion of a substandard, house on a substandard lot to a childcare center, a brand-new building in the coastal zone and say a childcare center that doesn't meet the parking requirements, those things would definitely trigger a use permit in a CDP in the coastal zone. So in terms of parking for that commercial institutional public facility scenario, a parking space, one parking space would be required for every four children enrolled and three spaces, or three spaces for every one thousand square feet of gross floor area, which excludes kitchens, storerooms, restrooms, whichever is lower. And that's based on the I T E, the Institute of Transportation Engineers manual. And parking would be one space for every six children for a single-family home conversion. There is a fifty percent parking reduction that is included in the ordinance for co-located childcare centers with a business or affiliated childcare centers with a business. Affiliated means that it's within a quarter mile of the business of which it serves and where the business offers incentives for its employees to use the childcare center, similar to the county's daycare center, which offers a discount to county employees and is also co-located. And then also, there's a fifty percent parking reduction for transit-oriented childcare centers located within a quarter mile of a transit center, as defined in the ordinance. There's an amnesty program for unpermitted facilities, so long as the facility's been there for a minimum of three years and licensed by the state. And then also, the ordinance provides new incentives for the creation of new childcare centers. It references the state density bonus laws, which already exist for commercial and housing development to incorporate childcare centers. And then also, it creates a new incentive for eligible employment centers to include a childcare center onsite and eligible transit-oriented development, typically housing, which incorporates childcare centers onsite. So just delving more into the fifty percent parking reduction. Accessory uses are those located on the same site, say, as a multifamily residential building or an office building. There, the argument is that if the childcare center contains or serves children from, children of the employees of the business, then you'll have fewer need for parking spaces as it'll just be the parking that's provided for the business that would be utilized. And then possibly, you know, they would walk their child over to the onsite childcare center. Affiliated uses are within a quarter mile of the business, so that's within walking distance. We've established that a quarter mile is walking distance. And then also, the same argument goes for the transit center. Childcare centers located within a quarter mile of a transit center would require fewer parking spaces. And actually, we, we brought this to the county's transportation working group. When we were, we were kind of looking at either whether it should be half of a mile or a quarter mile would be a reasonable walking distance and determined that a quarter mile would be appropriate. And the tran, the transportation working group suggested that a lot of parents, well, some, anyway, some parents might be biking their children now to the childcare center. So that we, we included then bike parking facilities, bike rack onsite as a requirement. And also, the same reduction would apply as well as floor area bonuses and density bonuses for those two incentive programs, the eligible employer and the eligible transit-oriented. As they, because they would incorporate onsite childcare. So just in terms of the public engagement process for this ordinance, the negative declaration was released on November twelfth through December fourteenth. I don't believe I received any correspondence regarding that there. I did receive some letters of support with this item, just over this, this public engagement process. We did meet with the coastal commission. We informed them of our argument for the non-intensification of use for the conversion of single-family residences to childcare centers. They seemed very supportive. They did offer some edits, which we've incorporated into the ordinance. I brought this to the Childcare Partnership Council on two occasions. They've been very supportive. Sarah, Sarah Kinnahan and Kristin Anderson are on this call. They're a part of that group. Sarah Kinnahan worked on the needs assessment in twenty-seventeen for childcare spaces in the county, and they're available if you, if you have any questions. Like I said, we took this to the transportation working group and worked out some of the transportation and parking issues. We took this to the Mid Coast Community Council on January twenty-seventh, the North Fair Oaks Community Council on January twenty-eighth, received their feedback. And now to the planning commission today and hopefully to the board of supervisors in April or May. I also wanted to include here that adopting, the, the full project of this is adopting the new chapter as well as making amendments to various, various, several chapters of the zoning regulations, which incorporate separate definitions for the different, the three different types of childcare facilities, as well as different use permit regulations. So we wanna, we wanna just take the childcare regulations out of each of those chapters and direct people to the one twenty, twenty-two point two chapter that, that says it all. However, we are retaining the language that childcare centers are allowed by right in three different North Fair Oaks zoning districts, so we're, we're keeping that in. So the recommended action today is that the planning commission provide a recommendation to the board of supervisors regarding the adoption of the ordinance, adding chapter twenty-two point two, as well as amending the text of various zoning districts as listed in section three of the adopting ordinance to reconcile those regulations with the new chapter. And that concludes my presentation. I did want to thank Jill Leclair and Lisa Owazasa and Steve Moitz for their direction and guidance on this ordinance. And like I said, Kristin Anderson, Sarah Kinnahan and Randy Torquias is from Supervisor Pine's office, and he was very supportive as well in the creation of this ordinance. So I can, I'm definitely available for any questions or comments that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez, you want to start off? You have any questions?
There. So at the beginning, you, you mentioned that, well, the deficiencies are pretty great and the need of childcare centers throughout the county, right? Now, so it stands to reason that, you know, since the deficiencies are so great, you also mentioned that you don't know of any any, any childcare centers that are operating that don't have the right permits for it. But one would stand to reason that, since we have such a high deficiency, that there has to be some, some of them out there that are operating under the radar. And I wonder, you know, if with this legislation, I mean, are we gonna be proactive on trying to bring those and make sure that they get regulated? I mean, I would think that we should make an effort for that.
Yeah, just to answer that, with about the last six months, six months ago, we went through a list of all the large family and childcare centers within unincorporated areas of the county and found that the childcare facilities that were not within our permit system were mostly large family daycare centers, which are now allowed by rights. So state law sort of remedied their permit status, as well as there were childcare centers located on school properties and which were not also in our permit system. And there is a separate regulatory process for childcare centers on school district property that, that doesn't always require them to get permits. So we're, wow, it's hailing, sorry. So the, so those, essentially, there weren't any facilities that were unpermitted that we know of in combing through the database of those facilities about six months ago.
Okay. Well, thanks. I mean, I'm just, you know, concerned that, you know, there may be out there some facilities that are, that are not totally safe to house children in the proper way. And that we should be proactive to make sure that they, they are regulated.
Thank you.
That's all. No, no more questions.
Commissioner Gupta?
Thank you, Chair. Yes. So, so are these daycare facilities that Commissioner Ramirez mentioned could be there unpermitted? And you said that six months ago, you were able to get an idea of those. So are they part of our system now that, that we know that we have more than what we thought in terms of childcare services?
There, there, there are none that are operating on an unpermitted status.
Okay.
Need the amnesty program that we know of, but should, should a childcare center come to light that needs to go through the amnesty program, that would be available within the first year of this ordinance and then section would sunset. And we did, just so you all know, we did a notice to around four hundred daycare centers of this meeting and that will be notified also at the, the board of supervisors' meeting to fold them in, to let, to make them aware of this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. So in the staff report, I came across numbers which are from two thousand seventeen. It said that there are some thirty-nine thousand some available while the need is for fifty-nine thousand two hundred fifty-two. So is there a new study done since then as to what the need is?
No, there hasn't been, to my knowledge. That was a very, very extensive survey of daycare centers and within different cities. So Sarah Kinnahan can, can answer that question if you need her to. However, just in terms of listening to news articles and news radio programs on women leaving the workforce during COVID to care for their children who are out of school, because a lot of schools have not reopened. Childcare seems to be definitely a need that, that continues even, even after COVID and will likely return to previous, you know, pre-COVID levels after all this is over.
Okay. So there's no plan of doing another study, at least?
She'll probably want to speak during the public comment period, so perhaps she can answer that at that time.
Okay, okay. All right, so. So, so what are the steps? I may have misread this in the staff report, but it says that the, that we recommend that staff submit ordinance to coastal commission? Is it, it's not going to Board of Supervisors?
Oh, it will. It's, that's the normal process for adopting this ordinance. So we'll definitely go to the board of supervisors, but for it to be effective in the coastal commission, I believe there has to be a resolution for the, for the board to direct staff to submit the ordinance to the coastal commission. For serving.
Yeah, that's correct. So the process is the planning commission makes a recommendation of the board of supervisors. The board of supervisors will direct staff to submit the regulations to the coastal commission. So they'll be effective in the coastal zone. And, yeah, and then the coastal commission might make modifications, which would have to come back to the board for acceptance.
Okay. But, but at that, at this point today, if we just go ahead with it, the planning commission is done with it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right, okay. Okay. So that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
No questions?
I have a little question. You're showing the slide that had mid-coast parcels over ten thousand square feet and I just jumped out at me, some of them are in the airport overlay. Is that just Is that just, uh, a preliminary list of, uh, map parcels? It doesn't say that those are suitable for childcare. I mean.
Yeah, it's just a rough, it's a rough cut of the parcels, ten thousand square feet are over. We did, um, include that the, uh, in the criteria that airport land use, um, land use plan criteria would need to be met, um, by the childcare provider. So should, should that additional, uh, density, uh, capacity within the home not be allowed by the airport land use plan? Then, uh, that would, that would not be an allowed use at that site.
So where we have, um, infill, basically, so single-family homes are allowed to be built in the airport overlay if they're considered infill. Would then converting that to childcare be a, a different aspect? Or would that automatically just be, um, allowed as well or hasn't that been discussed yet?
Uh, I think I covered it in my neg deck. Um, I would need a moment to look.
It's, it's not critical that you answer that now. It just.
Okay.
Came up to me, um, yeah, we, the airport compatibility plan has been completed for some years. And yet the zoning hasn't quite caught up with that yet.
Okay.
Um, Chair Ketchum, I, I can comment on that. Um, you know, my understanding is that zoning, uh, changes in general plan or LCP changes that affect the, um, airport, um, planning area. They need, that needs to go to the airport land use commission. The projects themselves do not. So, um, I don't know, Camille have, um, provisions to have this reviewed by the airport land use commission yet?
Well, it says, it says here that the, according to the Hafn Bay Airport Land Use, um, Plan, um, within safety zones, safety zones encompass the majority of Princeton to the south, the majority of the residential area of Moss Beach to the north of airport, uh, both west and east of highway one. Zone six is airport properties and seven includes areas of El Granada and Montero, um, where the land use plan allows for childcare centers, but restricts the density of non-resident uses to no more than three hundred persons per acre, approximately thirty-four point four persons per five, five thousand square feet. So actually that would be, um, that would be probably be a reason, you know, it's a high limit per five thousand square foot parcel. So it, you know, the parcel minimum size is ten thousand. Um, so that would probably be more persons than, than would be needed, more capacity than is needed.
Okay. Um, shall we open public comment?
Sounds good to me. So we're now opening public comment for item number three. Um, let's see, I do see one hand raised or two hands raised for this item. Um, and once, just a reminder, if, um, you wish to raise your hand, you can, uh, do press star nine to raise and unraise. Uh, we'll first call on, um, a second. Uh, Sarah Ke- Kinnahan by, followed by Kristin Anderson. Just a moment.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Sarah Kinnahan. I'm the coordinator for the San Mateo County Childcare Partnership Council. We are an advisory body to the county board of supervisors and the county superintendent of schools on matters related to planning for childcare and preschool. And I've been working with Camille, um, as well as staff from Build It For San Mateo County's Children to craft the updated ordinance for several years now. And so we're very excited to see the draft ordinance moving closer to approval and implementation. Um, the draft that was presented to you today will definitely make it easier for new childcare programs to navigate the planning and permitting process with consistency across all of unincorporated San Mateo County and to help increase the supply to address those supply gaps that were mentioned. Um, in terms of the needs assessment, we do that every five years. So we are due to release an updated needs assessment next year. Um, and just to give you a sense, in some of the unincorporated areas of the county, uh, when I looked at the mid-coast region, there was a gap of about four hundred spaces for children age of zero to four. And in the three zip codes that touch North Fair Oaks, there's a gap of about one thousand four hundred spaces. Um, so, uh, we commend the county for taking steps to streamline the regulations for developing new childcare programs that will meet community needs. And I also wanted to just add in terms of the questions that were raised about unregulated childcare. Should programs, um, come onto your radar that are operating in an unregulated fashion? The state's Community Care Licensing Office would be the one, uh, that could receive complaints and that provides oversight around the health and safety and licensing of programs. And I can answer any questions if people have them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and, um, call on Kristin Anderson next. Kristin, please accept this invitation. I mute your microphone and we begin speaking.
Good morning, Chair Ketchum and commissioners. I'm Kristin Anderson, childcare planning and policy consultant and former Redwood City childcare coordinator. Several years ago, I participated on the North Fair Oaks Community Plan Advisory Committee and helped to write the childcare language in that plan. I'm pleased to have worked with the county staff on this proposed countywide ordinance and encourage you to send a recommendation of approval to the board. The lack of childcare facilities is a significant barrier to addressing the county's large childcare supply gap. Childcare operators typically do not have the expertise or resources to develop property. The ordinance will clarify and streamline the standards and processes and will support the development and operation of new center-based programs. It also aligns with state law, the treatment of licensed family childcare home providers. Cities in our county are taking similar actions and supportive zoning amendments are expected to go to Redwood City's council on March twenty-second. Thank you for considering support of this ordinance and thank you for your service to San Mateo County. I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you, Kristin. I will go ahead and call on, um, Christine Pedia. Christine, please accept this invitation. I mute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hi, um, hello commissioners. Um, I'm Christine Pedia. I'm the director of Build Up For San Mateo County's Children, which Sarah mentioned. Um, we're a county initiative aimed at expanding and improving childcare facilities in the county. And we came out of basically the need assessment that you mentioned, as well as a facility assessment, um, that showed how much we needed a group to advocate for childcare facilities. So, um, that's a huge goal of the county and of our initiative. Um, so I'm really thankful to Camille for working on this. I know it's been several years in the making and it's really nice to see this draft ordinance finally moving forward. Um, basically this ordinance will make it possible for childcare facilities to open up easier. And they're highly regulated and high, you know, so that stuff is all taken care of. But this will really help with the permitting process and it'll help with consistency across all of the unincorporated areas. Um, we know that there's a huge shortage. Um, unfortunately, since the needs assessment, it's, it's grown and we're still working on some of those numbers. But we know with the pandemic going into its second year, it's even more critical to not only expand childcare facilities, but preserve the ones that we have. And, um, childcare is a community benefit and municipalities need to make every effort to take steps to streamline these regulations, um, to meet community needs. And I know that the board of supervisors have been very supportive of childcare and understanding the great importance, um, of it. So, um, hopefully, I, we ask for your support, um, in supporting childcare small businesses. They are small businesses and supporting the working families who utilize them. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that was our last speaker.
Thank you. May I have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Your Ketchum?
Hi. Oh, that's it. Motion passes. Um, so public comment and the side of him is now closed. Uh, Commissioner comments? Shall we start off with Commissioner Ramirez?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yes, I, I fully support this. Um, I think that, uh, as was stated, you know, um, we have a huge need, uh, for more childcare facilities. So, you know, the, the, anything that we can do to make it easier, um, for some of these businesses to open and operate, uh, would be of, you know, great, uh, a great addition to the different communities, um, that, that is so desperately needed. So with that, I'm just gonna say I'm, I'm in total support.
Commissioner Gupta? No, we, we have tremendous need for childcare. And COVID has shown that even more so because so many of the mothers had to drop out of the workforce. So I can see there's a lot of work that has gone in there in streamlining, regulating and expediting, uh, these smaller businesses and even for these large homes, large residential homes. I think that's, that's a step in the right direction, uh, to increase the supply of childcare. So I'm in support of this.
Commissioner Hanson?
Well, we've been tracking this for over six years. Um, it's been well-vetted and we certainly haven't seen the situation improve significantly. It is time to accept, uh, the recommendations. And hopefully the things will get better moving forward.
Well, I also support this and thank everyone for their hard work. Do we have a motion?
I'm ready to make the motion. Go ahead. So Planning Commission recommends that the board of supervisors adopt a resolution adopting the initial study negative declaration. Adopt an ordinance adding the new chapter twenty-two point two, childcare centers of the zoning regulations, repealing section sixty-four zero one point two, general provisions relating to large family daycare homes and amending the text of the county zoning regulations for various zoning districts as listed in attachment C. And adopt a resolution directing staff to submit the ordinance to the coastal commission.
I second this.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Your Ketchum?
Hi. Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Moving on to the directors portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. Um, I will keep my video on and if I start breaking up, you guys can wave at me and I'll turn it off. Um, so, um, let me just say thank you to Camille and the team and all the speakers involved in the last item. Um, this is really a major step in the interest of the next generations. And so I'm glad to see that moving forward. So thank you for your support on that. Um, with regard to correspondence, um, you heard from, uh, Mr. Snow, um, this morning. And I want to let you know that we will be following up on the matters that he raised. Um, his message was followed by an email from Janet Davis, which you might have received. That came in at about ten thirty and, um, you know, she re- reiterated his concerns, which we certainly will follow up on. But, um, her suggestion that, um, the planning and building department doesn't have qualified professionals who care about trees is just plain wrong. So I honestly take offense at that, just like I took offense at, um, developer who asserted that it was our fault that they removed the trees because trees are, um, something we care deeply about and an important part of our process. So I just wanted to reassure the commission that, um, you know, I, I don't take those criticisms lightly and we really work hard at protecting important trees. And our commitment will continue to be there in that regard. So unless there's questions on that, I'll move on to, uh, study session for next meeting. Um, we would, um, like to indulge you with a presentation on our long-range work plan and give a nice send-off to Joe before he leaves. He, um, um, I think he's got the ship set in a good direction and we hope that you'll agree. And, um, so we look forward to having that discussion with you, um, at the next meeting. Uh, in addition to that item, we have, um, two permits. Um, we have, uh, I'm sorry, three permits. Um, one is for a coastal development permit application for a vault toilet in Montero State Beach at the Martini Creek parking lot. Now there is a, a coastal development permit for a bridge replacement at, um, over Butano Creek. This is a private bridge that serves two residences. And then, uh, the third permit is for, um, a proposal by the Mid Peninsula Open Space and Recreation District to, uh, subdivide a two-hundred-and-eleven acre parcel, which is located between Tanitas Creek and Purissima Creek. And, uh, the purpose of the subdivision is to set aside a sixty-two acre portion of the lot for, um, private ownership and to place the remainder under, uh, Mid Penn's ownership so they can accommodate future access and recreation. Unless there's questions about that, I'll move on to the, um, director's report. So I just have three items to report to you today. Um, the first is I wanted to make sure you knew that, uh, the coastal commission will be considering our local coastal program amendment regarding Cypress Point this Friday. Um, so if you'd like to tune in to that hearing, um, you can get there by following the coastal commission website links. If you have any trouble with that, um, feel free to contact me or Janet. We'd be happy to help you with that. Um, I'm pleased to report that their recommendation is to approve the amendment without modifications, um, which in my experience is a rare occurrence. So, um, kudos to the team for doing the good upfront work to avoid the need for changes. And, uh, the second item I'd, uh, report to you on is, um, regarding our Xcela upgrade project. I'm pleased to report that our second release, um, occurred this week. That expanded, um, the online permitting capabilities of our system to include, among other things, um, new solar systems, which is of course important to the county and under state law, we need to process these permits in a specific timeframe. And, um, the consensus from the folks testing and operating the system is vast improvements. So I'm very pleased with the way that's going and I'll keep you posted on the subsequent phases. Finally, um, with regard to the continuing evolution of how we serve the public under, um, our current circumstances, um, I wanted to let the commission know that we did open a customer service window at four-five-five county center. Um, we placed a window that faced out onto the county courtyard with a booth somewhat similar to a bank teller or a movie theater type booth. And we began staffing that, um, the week, uh, before this. And, um, we're pleased to have this opportunity to serve the public face-to-face again. So, um, that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Steve?
Got one.
Commissioner Hanson?
Um, considering where we were with the fires last year, have we moved any way to reduce the fire load in the communities like La Honda and Skyland and those things? Have, have we done anything like that?
Um, yes. Yes, we are collaborating with a number of partners to address that important need. And those partners include private property owners, for example, in El Granada. We are currently working with a group of homeowners that would like to get permission to remove a clump of eucalyptus trees. We've been helping them through the permit process to do so. We're collaborating with the Resource Conservation District on a programmatic permit under which private property owners can work with them to get their assistance in removing fire hazard trees in an expedited way. We're collaborating with Cal Fire and the in our open space areas. So yes, those discussions continue and projects are evolving. So we definitely continue to invest into that important need.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, see you guys. Thank you.